You need parking. You can rent from the square.
Check mic one, two. Check microphone one, two. Check microphone one, two, one, two.
Ninth regular meeting, Medford City Council, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five is called to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Present.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Singh. President Baer's.
Present, please rise to salute the flag. Or six present, one absent, please rise to the flag. And just to note, Counselor Lemming is absent due to his military service. Two, five, zero announcements, accolades, remembrances, reports and records, two, five, zero, six, two, offered by Counselor Scarpelli. Resolution in memory of Mr. William Shane Hordy. Whereas the Medford City Council deeply mourns the passing of Mr. William Shane Hordy, a lifelong resident of the city of Medford who passed away on March tenth, twenty twenty five at the age of seventy. And whereas Mr. Hordy was born August third, nineteen fifty four in Vacaville, California, the beloved son of the late Charles L. and Carol L. Spencer Hordy. And later made Medford his lifelong home. And whereas Shane graduated from Medford High School and went on to honorably serve his country as a member of the United States Marine Corps. And whereas Mr. Hordy dedicated over thirty years of honorable and selfless service to the city of Medford as a firefighter, serving with courage, compassion, and unwavering commitment to public safety. And whereas Shane remained a proud and active member of the Medford Fire Department community long into his retirement, frequently visiting his former engine six station and staying connected with his fellow firefighters. And whereas Shane leaves behind a legacy of love, service, and deep rooted community ties survived by his loving wife, Mary Kelly Hordy, daughter Kelly M. and her husband Chris J. Jenke. Granddaughter Casey K. Jenke. Sister Dawn Foley, brother Mark Hordy and his wife Maureen, and many nieces and nephews. Now therefore be it resolved that the Medford City Council formally extends its deepest sympathies to the family and loved ones of Mr. William Shane Hordy. And expresses his profound gratitude for his service, friendship, and lasting impact on the city of Medford. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to the Hordy family as a token of the city's respect and admiration. Counselor Scarpelli.
First, I appreciate tabling this in my absence. Last week I was very, two weeks ago I was very sick and trying to get over right now, so I appreciate tabling it so I could share some kind words to the Hordy family. Shane was a remarkable individual, someone that worked hard for the city of Medford and saved many lives as a firefighter. He, he worked to support his amazing family. I was a former colleague of mine, his, his amazing wife, Mary, and his, his, his daughter Kelly. And I know that leaves a huge void in that family. The Hordys were mainstays in our community for many, many years as custodians and teachers and firefighters. And he'll be missed and we send our condolences to the Hordy family. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. On the motion of Counselor Scarpelli seconded by, seconded by Counselor Singh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro.
Yes.
Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
President Baer's.
Yes, six affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. Please rise for a moment of silence. Two, five, zero, seven, six, offered by President Baer's Resolution to Recognize Food Allergy Awareness Week. Whereas more than thirty-three million Americans have food allergies, nearly six million are children under the age of eighteen. Whereas research shows that the prevalence of a food allergy is increasing among children and adults. Whereas nine foods cause the majority of all food reallergy reactions in the United States, shellfish, fish, milk, eggs, tree nuts, peanuts, soy wheat, and sesame. Food allergy reactions can range from mild symptoms to severe reactions such as anaphylaxis. Whereas anaphylaxis is a serious allergic reaction that is rapid in onset and may cause death. Whereas every ten seconds, food allergy sends a patient to the emergency room. Reactions are typically occur when an individual unknowingly eats food containing an ingredient to which they are allergic. Whereas emergency medical treatment for severe, severe allergic reactions to food has increased by three hundred and seventy-seven percent in only a decade. Whereas childhood food allergies cost U.S. families thirty-four billion dollars each year. Whereas the food allergy research and education is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the quality of life and the health of individuals with food allergies. And to providing them hope through the promise of new treatments. Be it resolved by the Medford City Council that we recognize May eleventh to seventeenth, twenty twenty five as Food Allergy Awareness Week in the city of Medford. And that we encourage residents of Medford to increase their understanding and awareness of food allergies and anaphylaxis. Be it resolved that we request that the mayor issue a proclamation to the same effect. And just to note, I believe the mayor did issue that proclamation. This was my item, just wanted to put it forward. That's a, an important issue and we often recognize different things, awareness weeks for different things here in this chamber. So the resolution otherwise speaks for. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say on the matter? Is there a motion? On the motion to approve by Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Callahan, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro.
Yeah.
Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Singh. President Baer's.
Yes, six affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. Records, the tabled records of the meeting of April eighth, twenty twenty five were passed to Counselor Collins. Counselor Collins, how did you find those records?
I found them in order and I move for approval.
On the motion of Counselor Collins to approve, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Callahan, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins. Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh. President Baer's.
Yes, six affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. The records of the meeting of April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five were passed to Counselor Lemming, whereas he notified and could be absent unless you wanted to say something. Okay, you looked at me like you didn't want to say something. I did review them. I found them in order. If someone wants to move approval or had other comments on the motion approved by Counselor Lozaro, seconded by Counselor Singh. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Singh. President Baer's.
Yes, six in the affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. Reports of committees, is there a motion to join? A motion to join by Counselor Singh, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Callahan, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Singh. President Baer's.
Yes, six in the affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. Reports of committees, two, five, zero, three, nine, which was our committee of the whole on April twenty ninth, April thirtieth, and May sixth. These were budget meetings when we heard preliminary budget presentations from several departments. Two, four, zero, three, three, offered by Vice President Collins, planning and permitting committee, April thirtieth, twenty twenty five, President Collins, Vice President Collins.
Thank you, President Baer's. We had another long substantive conversation on the draft proposals for Medford Square, West Medford Square, and the draft updates to the ADUs ordinance. We reported them out of committee and later tonight they will be up for a vote to refer to the Community Development Board for further discussion and public hearings. Move for approval.
Thank you. Counselor Lemming was resident services and public engagement. Is Counselor Singh the vice chair of that committee? Or is it Counselor Scarpelli? Sorry about that. It's. I can't remember anymore. And we have two, four, oh, six, nine, two, four, three, five, four, and two, five, oh, four, one. All right. Counselor Sang.
So we met on three items. One will appear later on tonight's agenda. Two, four, oh, six, nine, I believe, is the updated HRC ordinance. We voted out a final draft for this meeting, for first reading. Two, four, three, five, four, I believe, is sending out the most recent monthly newsletter. And two, five, oh, four, one, I believe, is on the public engagement strategy for for the budget process. We sent out a Google survey for residents to be able to give their input to us about what they'd like to see in the city this budget season, what they want to see long term, and how we can best engage them as well. I encourage all residents at home to, to fill out that form and you can contact us if you have any trouble accessing it. We discussed preliminarily the results that we found at the time of the meeting. We had about ninety-two results. We've since gotten ten to fifteen more. And we will continue outreach.
Thank you, Counselor Sang. And the clerk has confirmed you got them all right. Two, four, zero, five, seven, offered by Counselor Lozaro, Public Health and Community Safety Committee, May seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Not sure if you knew this, but Counselor Sang was valedictorian of his high school class. So I, the Public Health and Community Safety Meeting on May seventh was about the the report from the Medford Police Chief on body worn cameras, which is a required yearly report, and that was presented by the police chief and we heard questions and comments and that is all moved to approve.
Thank you. On the motion of Counselor Collins to approve the joined committee report seconded by Counselor Lozaro. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent, sorry. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Sang. President Bears.
Yes. Sixty affirmative, one absent. The committee reports are approved. Refer to committee for further discussion. Resolution to attend Veterans Department event as listening session be it by Counsel Lozaro. Twenty-five, zero, seven, three, be it resolved that a city counselor join the Medford Veteran Services Director Veronica Shah at the Veterans Coffee and Cookies Hour as a listening session to hear directly from Medford Veterans and to answer questions. Be it further resolved that this resolution be referred to the Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee on the motion of Counsel Lozaro to refer to Resident Services.
Thank you. Um, one of the things that we do monthly as part of our Resident Services and Public Engagement activities is we hold monthly listening sessions and other less consistent listening sessions. We hold monthly sessions at the Senior Center. And we hold other sessions in various places with different groups around the city. And when we were hearing from the departments about their budgets, we heard from the director of the Veteran Services Department and she spoke about Veterans Coffee and Cookies Hour. And it was mentioned that it might be a good opportunity for Counselor to join this event as a listening session. And I thought I would offer it here so that we can send it to the Resident Services Committee. This is sort of a formality, but also just a good opportunity for me to remind everybody that we do host those listening sessions at the Senior Center. I'll be there on May twenty-ninth at twelve o'clock noon. Anybody is welcome. It's really geared toward our Medford seniors and people who will already be at the Senior Center. But it's always the fourth Thursday of the month with a rotating member of the Resident Services Committee. And it's a great opportunity to connect with the city council and tell us what you're noticing and thinking about the city. And this is, this will hopefully eventually when we schedule it, be a great opportunity for us to have a similar conversation with our veterans. Thank you.
On the motion to refer to committee by Counsel Lozaro, second, oh, sorry, Counsel Callahan.
Thank you. Do you have a date? Okay, thank you. And I, if I may, also remind people not just that we have the senior center ones, but that we do listening sessions. So I want people to understand that we do listening sessions and for folks, you know, who maybe do not come to city council meetings. You know, the purpose is really to hear from folks who are not coming here. So just for residents to understand that and if you have suggestions, we would love to hear them. Thank you.
Great. I'll take that also as a second of the motion. Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Sang. President Bears.
Yes. Sixty affirmative, one absent. The motion passes. Twenty-five, zero, seven, four, offered by Counsel Callahan. Resolution to invite the Office of Prevention and Outreach to a Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee meeting. Whereas the Office of Prevention and Outreach offers many much needed services to our community that residents may not know about. Now therefore be it resolved by the Medford City Council that we invite the Office of Prevention and Outreach staff to join us at a Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee meeting on a Wednesday night to inform the city council and the public about their services. Counselor Callahan.
Thank you. It really pretty much speaks for itself. I was talking to them and they suggested that they come here to city council so that we could just get the word out about the services that they offer.
Great. On the motion of Counsel Callahan to refer to the Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Lozaro. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Sang. President Bears.
Yes. Sixty affirmative, one absent. The motion passes. Hearings, two, five, zero, three, six, petition to amend special permit, two eighty-two Mystic Avenue. Public hearing notice, City of Medford City Clerk's Office, the Medford City Council will conduct a public hearing on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven PM in the Howard F. Alden Memorial Auditorium on the second floor of Medford City Hall at eighty-five George P. Hassett Drive, Medford, Massachusetts, relative to an amendment requested by Clear Channel Outdoor on behalf of the property located at two eighty-two Mystic Ave, Medford, Massachusetts, oh, two, one, five, five. The petitioner is seeking an amendment to a previously granted special permit. The petitioner is seeking the amendment to upgrade and replace two digital screens on the signboard located at the property and to ask for a review and potential adjustment reduction in the permit fee. A copy of the full text of the requested amendment can be viewed in the Office of the City Clerk, Room one oh three, Medford City Hall. Please call the Medford City Clerk's Office at seven, eight, one, three, nine, three, two, four, two, five, for any aids and accommodations by order of the Medford City Council. Signed, Adam L. Herdaby, City Clerk. We have continued this twice now, but I will reopen the public hearing from, continued from April eighth and April twenty-ninth. Do we have a representative of the petitioner from Clear Channel present? Please raise your hand on Zoom or let us know if you're in the chamber. Not seeing representative of Clear Channel. Counselor Scarpelli, I'm guessing they didn't contact you.
Counselor President.
Yeah.
But if the petitioner is not here, we move to table again. Keep it on file.
On the motion to continue the public hearing to our next regular meeting by Counselor Scarpelli and request review by the city solicitor, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Callahan. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
That was nice to do. As the city solicitor.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Sang. President Bears.
Yes. Sixty affirmative, one absent. The public hearing is continued to May twenty-seventh and we will request review by the solicitor. The public hearing is temporarily closed. Petitions, presentations, and similar papers, twenty-five, zero, seven, two, petition for an amendment to a common vixeler license, the establishment. One second here. Petition to the Honorable City Council, counselors, the undersigned, respected request amendment for operating hours on the common vixers license all days, Sunday through Saturday or Monday through Saturday. Brief explanation, we would like to extend our license to one AM. We have events that go into a later hour and don't want to end early, sports games, et cetera. Business name, the Establishment Restaurant, business address, one seventy-five Rivers Edge Drive, and business owner, Matthew Greer the second. Do we have the petitioner present? And I will go to Counselor Scarpelli in the meantime. Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clarifications with clerk, can we through you, through Chairman, Mr. President. The hour is now still coming through the council. It's for approval. I know that there's been
For common, well.
It's, it's an amendment. It's, it's an amendment to the hours of operation under the common vic license.
Comes back, okay. Yes. I know there's some big, some confusion, but.
It's no longer a special permit.
Right, right. Just so it has to come back. Okay, thank you. So is the, the petition to him, Mr. Clerk.
I don't see them. And could you raise your hand on Zoom, Matthew Greer, or a representative for the establishment?
They were in last week at the office.
Yeah, I'm not seeing them present.
I mean, to be honest with you, I think that, I mean, we could wait for them next week, but I think that's just preliminary. I think that you're seeing one o'clock as a, as a norm where the establishment is located. It's a, it falls outside the range of the neighborhood. So in a sense, traditional neighborhood. So I know that we've extended permits to one o'clock, but for multiple locations now, this council has taken a stance on open up different establishments to one o'clock all over the community. So I think we, as I said in the past about keeping things consistent, I would recommend to to award this this, this, these hours with a thirty, sixty, ninety day review.
All right. On the motion of Counselor Scarpelli to approve with a thirty, sixty, ninety day review, seconded by Counsel Lozaro. Is there anyone? Anyone else would like to speak on this? Any objections or discussion? Seeing none on the motion, seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Sang. President Bears.
Yes. Sixty affirmative, one absent. The motion passes. Motion's orders and resolutions, two, four, zero, six, nine, offered by Counselor Sang, Amendment to the Human Rights Commission Enabling Ordinance. Is there a motion to waive the reading in favor of a summary by the proponent on the motion of Counselor Sang to waive the reading, seconded by, seconded by Counsel Lozaro. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Sang. President Bears.
Yes. Sixty affirmative, one absent. The motion passes. Counselor Sang.
Thank you. At a moment where I think a lot of residents are scared, concerned, afraid about their human rights, civil rights of their own and their neighbors. I think it becomes incumbent upon us as elected officials to do the most that we can to safeguard those rights here in our community. I think the city council has repeatedly shown over the last, especially over the last few months, but in the last few years too, that we stand on the side of human rights. And we, we stand on the side of our city being more proactive and reaching out to residents to let them know about their rights, about proactive about solving inequalities and disparities in our community and to do better in general. This effort, this particular effort came about over a year ago, if not two years ago, with members, former members of the Human Rights Commission who, you know, reached out to me and let me know how the existing ordinance, the one that we have right now, is quite outdated and has led to a lot of problems where the HRC can't do what HRCs normally do in surrounding communities as well. And, you know, a lot of these are basic functions that we really think that we would conceive of, of a Human Rights Commission doing, like hosting events and letting, you know, residents know about their rights, stuff like that. And as, as well as creating recommendations and studying data that we collect in the city. In this day and age, I think it becomes important for us to act on that and to fix those problems that we've seen in that old ordinance. And I'm so grateful to the hard work of a lot of our residents, a few of whom are here in the audience tonight, but I know a lot of folks at home are also watching this meeting. Who, and, you know, this group of residents came together and we all worked together on a draft ordinance to update the HRC to make it fit for modern times. And I'm, you know, so thankful and grateful for their hard work because I know it was a labor of love. We've been spending a lot of time on this over the last few months, reaching out to our DEI Director, to the mayoral administration, to different stakeholders, making sure that we have something that is ambitious and actionable. So that's what I want to say about this. In a, in essence, this ordinance update reestablishes the Human Rights Commission and reempowers it to do even more and to be even more proactive in serving our city. I know a lot of if, people who are even currently on the HRC have been pushing up for this because the HRC is currently pretty defunct. And so I'm excited for the city council to finally be voting on this tonight. There are some small technical amendments for the most part that I would make a motion to, to adopt. And Mr. Clerk, I'll send these to you via email as well. But in section fifty dash sixty-two, because we changed the committee composition for the kind of the staggered terms at the very start, we just need to fix the language there. So instead of a third of members shall serve for one year term, a third, a third. I would amend that to read two members shall serve for one year term, three members shall serve for two year term, and three members shall serve for three year term. So that's the first amendment. The second amendment would be to strike the words administration in the public school system after the word city in section fifty dash sixty-six in subsection B. And then in or in, and that would be in section fifty-five dash sixty-six. And then third edit would be also in section fifty-five, fifty dash sixty-six to strike subsection D two and to renumber the subsections. The, that last edit is a little bit more substantive. It's still mostly technical. That was upon request of the school committee who said that the DSC reporting isn't necessarily a complete picture of what we have at the schools. And so we shouldn't put it in the ordinance.
So D two.
D two, yeah.
And then what was the language strike in?
In.
Fifty-sixty-six B one?
Yeah, in B one, just to strike the words administration and public school system, just leave that.
Advise the city. Got it. I just have one question on your amendment.
Yes, yeah.
In sixty-two, it says there's eleven members.
Yes.
And then you named eight for the staggered terms.
My math. I think my math is off. Sorry. I meant to say three, four, four.
Three, four, four. All right. All right. Just make sure that gets pricked in what we send to the clerk as well.
I'm, I'm glad that I can always count on Counselor Bears to check my math one more time.
Oh, yeah. All right. And on the process, this says, this was in Resident Services?
Yes, this is in Resident Services.
And how many meetings did you have on it?
We had quite a lot, few. We had five at least, five meetings on this.
Right.
Five or six.
Great. Thank you. So on the motion of Counselor Sang to approve her first reading as amended, seconded by, seconded by Counselors Lozaro, any further discussions by members of the council? Counselor Lozaro.
Would just like to thank Counselor Sang for his careful work on this project and thank the members of the current informer of the the committee, the commission. And just everybody who put work into this project. It's been a careful process and I appreciate everybody putting in the separate. A careful process and I appreciate everybody putting in the separate because it's an important process that deserves careful study. So I appreciate that and I've enjoyed being a part of it and I am eager to move it to the next step. So it can be the, the best governing document that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sang, just one other question, do we strike all of D two or just, okay? Great. And could you, in addition to sending the amendments, could you send a clean copy in a Word document? Thank you, just for the advertising. Any further discussion by members of the council on the motion? Seeing none, we will go to any discussion by members of the public, either in person or on Zoom. You can come to the podium in person or raise your hand on Zoom and you'll have three minutes. I see on Zoom. We have Munir, give me one moment. All right. I'm going to recognize you and please name an address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, excuse me. My name is Munir Germanus, I live at Three Summit Road. And. Very briefly. I served for several years at the HRC between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-two and served as chair for four years. And in the fall of two thousand twenty-one, so several years ago, the HRC formed a subcommittee to generate a strategic plan for better definition of the role of the HRC. Since, as councillor Sang mentioned, the existing ordinance was outdated and it did not fully describe the role. And responsibilities of the HRC. And, and very quickly, soon after that. The HRC decided to disband this committee and accepted an offer from Safe Medford to establish an ad hoc committee. To assess the effectiveness of the HRC and to provide recommendations. The, this committee included three HRC members along with several Safe Medford members. The committee conducted several dozen interviews of current and past HRC stakeholders and surveyed the missions, goals, and activities of human rights commissions. In nearby cities and towns and also reviewed the ordinance that established the Medford HRC. And next, the subcommittee discussed and agreed upon a set of recommendations regarding the goals of and roles of the HRC. And operating guidelines for their implementation. And in the course of this work and discussions, the committee concluded that to a significant extent. The HRC has been hampered by its current enabling ordinance, which was outdated. And it would need to order and carry out the mandate that the order defines. After presenting the recommendations of this committee to the HRC. The committee recommended that a new ordinance be generated clearly outlining the HRC's compositions, roles, and responsibilities. Providing the HRC with independence and resources to fulfill those responsibilities. Subsequently, another group that included two previous HRC chairs, the previous DEI director. And several folks in Medford. We worked with councillor Sang, for whom we are really very grateful. And we worked to offer such an ordinance, which is now under consideration. I urge the city council to adopt this ordinance with the edits that were made after discussion with the city administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Munir. We will go now to the podium. Name and address for record, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Sure, Mike Castellano at four nine nine Main Street. First, thank you, councillor Sang, for bringing this. This is actually a great ordinance to bring and timely and. Actually, super. Excited to see it. I was not expecting it when I came, decided to come to the session today. So I do. Have some questions, though, that I just would like some clarification on, I think. I, it, it seems like the data that you, that is being. Written into this and being received from various departments is pretty limited in scope. And in particular, I mean, I think, you know, especially right now with what's going on in the world. Police activity and its impact on our residents' rights. Their fundamental rights is extremely important to investigate and inspect and see what we can do to make sure that everything is as above board as possible. But as this is written, the, the only data that you really have, that you get from the police are basically police stop activity. And I am just, like, is there a reason that it's not broader than that? Like, why can't we just have a broad scope, broad net? The police have to, the Medford Police Department has to provide. Activity data over, you know, however many last few months or something on a regular basis, because I think that would go a lot. Further and enabling this committee to actually craft laws and policies to advise the council on.
Any other questions or is that the main question?
I, no, that's, that's the main, all right. Good job. My other question, thanks.
Thank you, great. I'll recognize councillor Sang.
I appreciate the compliment through the chair. I think that's an excellent question. So essentially, the data that is listed out here are things that we know slash historically know the city has collected. A lot of the data is, honestly, one of the problems with. These types of issues in municipal governance is that we don't have a lot of the data we really should be having. Which is why there's a whole section on requesting that the city council and the city administration collect data. Of course. I think, I think it's just we could create a whole list and we just wanted something from different, you know. We, we wanted examples of data points that each department could collect or relevant departments could collect. Police stops is the main thing that we know, at least. We, we know that this, the MPD does collect. And that we have used in, in the past to analyze disparities. I do hear your point, which is why in, in front of every list, we've made sure to add that, you know, these points, these data points are like. Minimum requirements or, you know, at minimum, we can, the HRC can request X, Y, Z. Or at minimum, department should, should collect X, Y, Z and report X, Y, Z. So all that to say that what the lists that we're referring to right now, they're non exhaustive. They're just a starting point for the HRC to be able to work on in the future. I think there is also a lot of worry, there would be a lot of worry from the administration, at least from executive viewpoint of. An ordinance asking them to collect data that. Isn't currently being collected. I think that would create some consternation in the corner office, which is why. Part of the negotiating process was to. Have data that, or to, 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 to have these categories that we thought were implementable. I also know that a lot of this comes from the basis of this version of the HRC ordinance. Is kind of like a collection of different HRC ordinances from different municipalities as well. So a lot of this is based on what other municipalities, HRCs are collecting and reporting on. That was a long answer. I think the, the short answer, their short answer is this isn't an exhaustive list. The HRC can request that, that's, you know, more data with, from the police department, that's within their powers here. And we just kind of put on, in the ord, into the ordinance data that we know the city is slash has historically collected.
Recognize you for, well, actually, I have to go back to Jennifer and then we'll come back to you. Jennifer, name and address for record, you have three minutes.
My name is Jennifer Yanko, I live at sixteen Main Street. And just in reference to this comment. There is state data that's available. I mean, arrests by race is available, freely available. So there's day, other data sources that can be used. That said, I just want to commend the, the council on, you know, hearing this ordinance. I think it's so important, as councillor Sang has said, right now, we're in a, we're in a place where. Our human rights and our civil rights are really under threat and it's. Extremely important, I think, that we have a active, effective Human Rights Commission. And I think this. This ordinance is very, very comprehensive. I did want to raise one concern and that has to do with. Let's see, I think this is fifty, sixty-five B. We talked about having the resources to do the work that it would be called upon to do. And for, as far as we know, I say we as one of the people who's been working on the original recommendations. Boards and commissions in the city of Medford do have a staff person assigned to them. You know, it could be a full-time, a part-time, an intern, but someone who is. Charged with sort of doing some of the clerical work that's involved distributing agendas, making copies. And, and particularly. All new members of the HRC will need to have training in running meetings and so on. And so. Someone who could organize that as well as keep up with the routine clerical and administrative tasks. That are associated with the HRC, I think that will really empower the HRC to do a much better job. So I urge. That section again. Fifty, sixty. Fifty, sixty-five B, where it says the mayor shall assign a qualified city employee or city council liaison. I would. Ask you to consider striking or city council liaison to provide staffing support to the commission because I think it's a significant task. And it would be good to have someone who is, you know, assigned. And who has the time and who is hired to do that. So that was my one comment, but again, really excited about this ordinance and thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Mike, I gotta go jump over you to Gaston and then come back to you. Gaston, name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Gaston Ferry, sixty-one St. Nicky Road. I support the spirit of the Human Rights Commission. I have reservations about specific, some specific sentences. So let me proceed to just quote excerpts and ask a few questions about it. So the first one in section fifty, sixty-two B. Quote, appointments shall be made to ensure that no more than sixty percent of membership are of any one race or racial identity, end quote. This rule is imposing a quota based on race or gender. How isn't the quota based on race or gender completely against the purposes of the Human Rights Commission? How isn't a quota based on race or gender plainly illegal? So let me give you an example. So let's say that the commission already has sixty percent of its membership, composed of Hispanics, Latinos. And I would like to get into the, the commission. Then that means that because we're already at the cap of sixty percent, then I would be immediately disqualified just based on my racial identity. So the second one, section fifty, sixty-six B three. Quote, request periodic annual reports from the city administration detailing employment diversity efforts, end quote. So my question is, how do we ensure that the employment diversity data is used to check that applicants were hired. Based on having been the most qualified for a job and not discriminated against based on the enumerations in section fifty, sixty-one C. So that's the correct thing, instead of using the enumerations in sixty, in sections fifty, sixty-one C. To give some applicants extra consideration beyond their qualifications for the job. And the last one, it's also section fifty, sixty-six C. Quote, the M H R C shall also exert its moral authority. On the full range of laws, practices, and policies that might have an impact on human rights, end quote. Where's the definition of what's moral, where's the definition of what's moral and what's immoral? The above gives wide undefined power to the commission. And there are several examples throughout history where governments have committed atrocious human rights violations based on moral authority. So those are just my questions. As I said, I, the support is Human Rights Commission spirit. But I would like to get some answers. On my questions. Thank you so much. I appreciate that and thank you for your job. Thank you.
Thank you. And go back, thank you for a minute and then we'll, Justin, I hope was writing everything down and we'll answer other questions.
So. The Medford Police Department must collect more data than just police stops. And I understand that we can get arrest or arrest data. From state sources and everything, but I mean, I, I, I just don't see why, like, why it can't just be like a broad net of like, get data from them. Like whatever they have. I mean, if they have records, they have data provided to the HRC council as an oversight board that makes sure that they're not. Violating any people's rights. But, so, and that's just my, I mean, it can always be fixed later, but. The thing is, I, I don't see in this any requirement on the. On the same sources of data to actually provide it within a timely manner. I don't know, may, if that's maybe just because there isn't, for legal reasons, went through review and that just isn't able to be put in here. But it would be, if possible, saying, if you request data from the MPD, you request data from the housing authority. They must provide it within thirty days of the request or something like that. Give some sort of timeline so that there's an enforcement mechanism to say when they have. By the black letter of what's in the, the ordinance. Are in violation of it. Otherwise, you, you will, you're setting yourself, you're setting yourself up to run into situations where you're going to have malicious compliance or just straight up non-compliance. Because there's no reason for them to comply. Let's, those are, yeah, called my other sort of comments on it.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Barry and then I'll go to councillor Sang. Barry, three minutes.
Barry Ingber, nine Draper Street. Thank you all for taking this up. Thank you councillor Sang for leading the charge on it. I would like to just restate every word that Jennifer Yanko has said. And I also want to bring up one, including her concern about having an assigned staff person. I also want to. Ask a question in, which I think is a concern. If I heard councillor Sang's amendments correctly. He was suggesting exercising section fifty, sixty-six number two. Is that correct?
Fifty-sixty-six D.
Sixty-six B number two.
A D two, so under research and reporting educational data such as school discipline rates and dropout rates. From the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education metrics on IEPs.
Oh, I don't know. I don't see that on here at all.
It's D two, it's one, one page further. So it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't B two, the periodic.
So it was not B two, okay. And what was the other change? I was not able to hear that.
Two fifty, sixty-six B, the main section. Instead of reading the city administration and the public school system, it would just read the city.
Okay. That's fine. I just want to state my support.
Thank you.
This ordinance, thank you very much.
Thanks, Barry. Councillor Sang on the questions.
Thank you. There, there's a lot, I'll take it one by one. On the, the, the data from police departments, the authorities. I would, I would support, you know, inserting a sentence in there. To, to, to request timely information. I think the, the reason why we didn't is because there's not a neat place to put it. Where, you know, some of the data that's under requests is more about requests rather than. It, it is more about data that we don't, we might not currently have mixed in with data that we know we have. So it'd be, of as well. So I think that's a good catch. Thank you. I will say that. I'll have to, you know, the, the mayor's office will also have to sign off on this, on this ordinance as well. So I would suggest reaching out to her office because her office is the one that will execute this ordinance. because her office is the one that will execute this ordinance. On the second residence concerns about, the concerns about the city staff person slash liaison situation. This is something we talked about in committee as well. So essentially in committee, we discussed how currently there is no assigned city staff person to the HRC. Historically, it's been the DAI director, but the DAI director has said that she won't be the liaison to the HRC. And so then it becomes, you know, it falls upon the mayor to decide who else will do it. That's something I'm working with the mayor on currently. And with the kind of people that we, the city staff that we have traditionally kind of thought of to be well-suited for this role, no one has, you know, no one has offered. And no one has said yes to it, which is why part of, through conversations with the mayor's office and with the DAI office, we put in the words, or city council liaison, or relevant, to give us the most flexibility to make sure that we can at the very least get this off the ground. And maybe once it's off the ground and up and running, we can get a city staff person to do that. I suspect this is also something that the Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee is going to keep working on in the future as well to make sure that we do have an assigned city staff person. But I would say that we shouldn't strike the words that were suggested that we, that was suggested to be struck just in order to make sure that we give ourselves the most flexibility going forward with getting the, this new HRC up and off the ground. With regards to, with regards to the section 50-62B, I believe that most of us can agree that the role of a Human Rights Commission necessitates diversity on that commission or that we have that flexibility to make sure that we have, you know, the best qualified residents joining. But in this, you know, in this case, qualification includes life experience and diversity as well. I think we've seen in the past with, especially with HRCs, but board and commissions in general, they don't always reflect the makeup of the city. And so this ensures the best, the best outcome that we, that we can get. And, you know, with regards to the policy advocacy work, the, the research and reporting that this, the HRC does, I believe that inherently human rights includes questions of reality. And that's something for a representative body of our city to get together and discuss. And something that we did actually make, make sure that was in this ordinance was that the HRC statements will be in the name of the HRC. But, you know, this is also a public forum for, just like the city council is, although I'm sure with different rules, is a public forum for residents to talk about what, what we see as human rights. But the fact is that so many of the human rights and civil rights that are under attack in our country right now are things that I would believe that at least 90% of the city believes, believes in. And so I don't see that language affecting that work.
So there was a further amendment to add language in 5066D regarding timeliness of reporting?
Yes. And just, I can read it out.
Sure.
So at the end of the blurb in 5666D, I would insert the words, "The following list shall not be exhaustive and all requested information from the city shall be provided in timely manner."
Okay. And just a clarifying question. It sounds like staff, like the mayor shall assign a city council liaison. She asked the council to do it, obligated to do it. Is that correct?
No, I, that would not be correct because it's, this is the kind of similar language as in other commission ordinances where, you know, she's asked, like with the current HRC, for example, it's the same language, like she's asked.
Right, so they would, they would not be obligated.
They would not be obligated.
Okay.
And I suspect this is something that the city council could also vote on, although that's not like a must. So it could be a resolution to delegate that to someone.
I guess what I'm saying is it sounds like you're putting that in to allow city councillors to be considered.
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly. Yeah, and that was suggested language from the mayor's office.
Okay. Any further discussion, members of the council on the amended amendment? Seeing none.
There is one technical edit that I forgot to mention when I was reading out the amendments. I was just caught off. I would add our standard severability language at the end of this ordinance.
Okay.
The standard language our city uses is, "The provisions of this ordinance are severable if any part or provision of this ordinance or the application, application of this ordinance to any person or circumstance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction. The remainder of this ordinance shall not be affected by such holding and shall continue to have full force and effect." That was in an earlier draft and I just forgot to copy and paste it into this one.
And is that a?
That would just, it would be its own section then.
Section 50-67?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. And please send the amendments in a clean copy.
Yes.
Going to go to Steve Schnapp, name and address for the record. Steve, you have three minutes. Got to unmute you and I'll restart.
Thank you. My name is Steve Schnapp. I live at 36 Hillside Avenue. I really appreciate Counselor Seng and the council moving on, re-establishing the HRC. I just have one question. Is there another city commission that is not staffed by the administration?
I do not, I mean, there, I don't know if any city commissions are not staffed currently. I don't, I certainly can say there's no city commission staffed by a city council.
So it's curious to me that the city administration would not enable that. So I would, I would urge the council to reconsider having, putting the language in that Jennifer suggested or striking the language that Jennifer suggested. But at any rate, thank you very much for finally moving on this. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Any further discussion by members of the council? Seeing none. And seeing no discussion members of the public. We do have a motion from Counselor Seng as amended, to approve as amended by Counselor Seng. Is there a second on the motion? On the second by Counselor Lozaro. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
For approval for first reading.
For approval for first reading as of it.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Seng.
Yes.
President Behrs.
Yes, 60 affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. 25075, offered by Vice President Collins, refer, proposed amendments to the Medford zoning ordinance, Medford Square District and West Medford Square District for, from the Community Development Board. This was referred from the Planning and Permitting Committee to our regular meeting, the initial proposal. The process from here is that the council is obligated to refer zoning amendments, rightfully presented zoning amendments such as this one to the Community Development Board. The Community Development Board will then hold a public hearing on the matter. They may choose to make recommendations to the council. The council will then hold a public hearing on the matter and consider any proposed recommendations from the Community Development Board. And then after the public hearing of the council is concluded, the council would vote to adopt or reject. With that, I will go to Vice President Collins.
Thank you, President Behrs. Thank you for outlining the steps that this proposal will take after a vote to refer it out to the Community Development Board this evening. And just to quickly recap the steps that have been taken to get us to this point, like all proposals that have been generated in our comprehensive zoning overhaul this year, or this term rather, these proposals, the zoning proposals for West Medford Square, Medford Square, and updates to our ADU's regulations were all developed in the Planning and Permitting Committee with committee members, the zoning consultant, NS Associates, and city staff members of the Planning, Development, and Sustainability Department. We met on this proposal three times between March and April. We had a public Q and A on the three proposals last week after they are referred out of the city council this evening. They will then begin the public hearing process before the Community Development Board. So far in the process, the Community Development Board has been taking their time to hold as many hearings on the zoning topics as they have felt the need to, which I think is great and I'm sure they will continue to do. That is another opportunity for community members to ask questions and give comment on these proposals as they have been doing when these proposals were in the Planning and Permitting Committee as well. So there has been a lot of discussion of these specific proposals themselves in committee. There will be a lot more discussion about the specifics of the proposals in CDB when they're gone into in depth. So I won't do that yet again here. But if folks want to learn more about these proposals before the CDB public hearings, there's a lot of information on the city zoning website, medfordma.org/zoning. And I encourage all residents to continue to be involved in the Planning and Permitting Committee process and to attend the CDB public hearings. With that, I would motion to refer the three proposals to the Community Development Board.
On the motion to refer to the Community Development Board by Vice President Collins, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Callahan. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Seng. President Behrs.
Yes, five and the affirmative, one of the negative one absent. The proposal is referred to the Community Development Board. Communications from the mayor, 25077, submitted by Mayor Brian Alago Kern. Medford Square Parking Lot Development, RFP Evaluation Committee update. I know that Director Hunt was stuck in a traffic commission meeting. We do have Economic Development Director Sal Estefano with us. I see several PDS folks in here. Do we know where Alicia Hunt is? Still in traffic commission. Sure. Is there a motion to table till later in the meeting? 25077 by Counselor Callahan, seconded by, Counselor Seng. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Yeah. Oh. Already called the roll though.
Hold it.
Okay, great. We do have to vote. I'm serious.
Really?
I called the roll.
I don't think you have to. All right.
Okay, just vote?
This is a vote to table.
Yeah.
We'll waste a roll call slip.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes. Wait, no.
Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming is absent. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Seng. President Behrs.
No. One of the affirmative, five of the negative one absent, motion fails. Is she coming down here? Okay. Well, I can just get us a little bit of preview vamping while we get there. So the update that we're receiving from the RFP Evaluation Committee tonight is regarding the awarding of the, our proposal submitted by Transom. So we do have here from the mayor, "Dear President Behrs and members of the Medford City Council, evaluation for the request for proposals, RFP, for leasing development of real property has completed its review and evaluation work. I respectfully request and recommend that council permit a presentation to be made to your honorable body on the proposals received, the evaluation process, and the committees vote for the preferred developer. Director Planning, Development, and Sustainability, Alicia Hunt, will be present at your meeting to present on behalf of the committee. Thank you for your kind attention to this matter. Sincerely, Brian Alago Kern, Mayor." We, the city, has had several plans on Medford Square over the past 20 years. All of them have talked about activating these surface lots behind and adjacent to City Hall. And last fall, an RFP was drafted regarding those lots requesting that proponents submit proposals for the redevelopment of those lots based on a number of conditions. The city did receive two proposals. There's an evaluation committee of which I was a non-voting member. The mayor was a non-voting member. And city staff and our Chamber of Commerce president were voting members that reviewed the proposals, interviewed representatives, and asked questions of the two proponents. And then eventually, after review, and there was also a scoring sheet based on a bunch of objective criteria, the committee made a recommendation to award the proposal submitted by Transom. And Director Hunt is here to share a little bit more about that. The next steps from here are that now the city will be able to enter into negotiations with the proponent. The proposal is a starting point, not a final product. So city staff working with the proponent will be able to tune that proposal, hopefully make some changes that I know that the city has wanted to make. And then, once a final agreement has been drafted, the city council will need to vote to approve the lease agreement for the city-owned land that these new developments would sit on. And with that, I think I provided some useful information and used the time well. Could we allow Director Hunt to share her screen? I'll recognize the Director of Planning, Development, and Sustainability.
Good evening. Thank you. And I do, I just feel the need to be very clear that I wasn't being rude writing in my office to be called down. In fact, I am a member of our traffic commission and we have been meeting since 5 o'clock, hearing petitions. And I just told them that I am in favor of the rest of the petitions on the agenda and I had to now leave. I just, I felt it was important to say that, that that's, that was not me just not being here.
Thank you.
So let me, so I don't normally share from Adobe, but I am gonna, I think there's a full screen option here. You.
It may be, yeah.
I think that's what you want to see.
Oh, it didn't change anything for us.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There's a little thing in the bottom right, just that little paper.
This one?
Yeah. Does that do anything? No, I don't know.
When I go to full screen mode, it doesn't change it on your end. I think I need to reshare. I need to put it in full screen and then share the screen. My apologies.
You have any tips?
And? No, that doesn't work either. Sorry.
We do have our Medford Community Media Director, Kevin Harrington, here to help out.
Do you know how to do it, Kevin? It's Adobe. I do have a PowerPoint version, but I have to go find it on my computer. My apologies. And I will, as we start, I, I didn't catch everything that President Behrs, I didn't catch everything that President Behrs said, but as we get this started, we were supported by a grant from Mass Development. There have been a couple of grants and I'll get into that. But one of them was to support us with a consultant to write the RFP and to help with all of this. And in fact, the reason I'm in Adobe is because our consultant prepared the presentation for us in NS Associates. You may recognize their name from the planning study. And I'm going to tell you that that is a pure coincidence. We asked Mass Development to please, would they support this effort of leasing out these lots? Leasing out these lots and doing this development. And they said, absolutely. You did the diff with us. You may all remember that, the development incremental financing. That was a prelude to leasing out these lots. They said, we want you to be successful. We have on-call consultants that can help with an RFP like this. Have you ever heard of consultant Emily Innis? We think she'd be a good fit for you. And I said, perfect. We're already working with her. And she is aware of the needs and the preferences of the city, so that would be a great. So actually, she has other staff, support staff, that you all have not met through the. The zoning process that were the consultants on this. Should I just flip to the PowerPoint version of this? It's not open. Share the whole screen and then go into. Yes, so nobody text me. I didn't turn off my. My notifications.
I don't know that we can.
There we go. All right. Well, I've warned people, okay? So this evening, so we, this is the. The space and the evaluation committee, as we were discussing. The mayor and President Bears were non-voting members. We were advised by Fiona, our procurement officer, Fiona Maxwell, as well as. Emily Innis from Innis Consultants and actually Claire O'Neil for Mass Development, attended all of our meetings and met separately with. Sal and myself as we went through this process. And so then the evaluation committee was myself. Sal Di Stefano, our Director of Economic Development, Nina Nazarian, the Chief of Staff, Tim McGivern, our Commissioner of Public Works. And Andrew Mather as the President of the Board of Directors of the Medford Chamber of Commerce. I will not read everything on all the slides, but I did feel that that one was important. So this is part of a much longer process. For those who have not been involved in Medford politics for a long time. There have been many Medford Square master plans, but we specifically referred back to a 2017 one. And in 2019, there was an evaluation of the real estate development potential of the city-owned properties done by Gamble Associates. So that helped inform this process as well. The housing production plan called out these parcels. As a good location to bring more housing and more development into the city. There was, we then did a process that some people may remember with the MAPC. Where we went to the senior center. I got yelled at a lot. We went to the library. We talked to people a lot. We did a bunch of outreach. Talking to people about what they would want to see, what were the concerns? Because when the city owns the parcels, you can ask for things. You could ask them to just pay you money and you can sell them. You can ask, or you can ask for community benefits where they provide things that the city wants to see. That is not necessarily cost-effective to the developer. And if we provide, if we lease the land, if we do it this other way, then we can get some more benefits, community benefits out of this. And then based on that work and from what we had heard from the community. We went and did, prepared an RFP for the lease and development of real property. So then this RFP process, we put the proposals out, we got those back. That we actually got those back, yes, in late December, but there's been a lot of work that's gone into this since then. With reviewing them, Innis as well did evaluations on these. We also, we then scored these. We also had a. Another firm do an economic development review of the proposals as well. And we requested additional follow-up information from the consultants and we interviewed them as well. And so now we are here making this recommendation of the preferred vendor, the preferred developer. We will also need the City Council to formally declare the property surplus to municipal requirements. We did not prepare that for this evening, but that is one of the legal steps. We are looking to meet with the developer next week to follow up with our lawyers who have also been involved. So there were sample leases. And sample agreements in the RFP that were prepared by our lawyers. So everybody is clear. I realize that it's not always, not everybody sees maps the same way I do. To orient you, this is Medford City Hall. This is where we are right now. This long strip is 93. And so the Salem Street Rotary is up here, Real Vita Real, Vita Real is here in this corner. So the city owns this lot. And then that's the pink lot and that one we have been calling Lot C. B is the lot behind us where you often see the buses stopping. There's bus stop there. We've incorporated that into it all along. We said, that's important. Oops, I didn't mean to go forward. And that's where the post office trucks are. We don't own this little small building on the corner. It's a three condo building and we have not been able to incorporate it into the project. And then there's the, this yellow lot down here is Lot A. It's the one closest to the river. So to orient you, here is the Peace Garden and the Senior Center. Our taller buildings are down here. This is the river. I will not spend this much time on all the slides, but I do really realize that people don't always see the maps the same way we all do. So these are some of the criteria that we talked about and the things that we rated them on. And you can see things that are very important to the city. You see affordable housing and parking and what their management plan is and. What their financial capacity was. That's one of the things we brought in an outside consultant to review them and make sure they had the capacity to do this. And what was their vision? So we got two responses, the Davis Company's response and Transom Real Estate's response. Both of them had architects. Interestingly enough, they both had the same legal counsel with them. And Transom also brought along landscape architects and Beyond Walls, which is a placemaking. They do a lot of large art. So this is the two proposed programs. You will see, yes, Davis. Proposed more housing than Transom. Transom proposed a higher percentage of affordable housing, which was one of the things we were looking for. They both proposed the same amount of commercial space, but that was also notably different when you go get down into it. And Davis had more parking, but less parking per unit when you look at the total number of units versus the number of parking spots. And parking and having available parking for the community was very important to us. I don't want to spend too much time on all of this, and I think that the punchline, most people have already seen the punchline of my. Proposal, which is that we selected one of them and which one we selected. So this was Davis and they had three residential buildings. They put the parking underneath each one of them. They talked about pocket parks. And they had a building over here that was a proposed pavilion that would have more. Space for businesses and would also be sort of a recreation type space. This is the Transom proposal. The Transom proposal has a large residential building in the middle. And then a parking garage over on the right. Some of their images of the parking garage, this is where they bring in Beyond Walls, is to make it not look like a parking garage. So your first thought is, that's art. And your second idea is, oh, that's parking. You may have seen some of this at Assembly Row. We've, I've seen that kind of thing all over the world at this point. And then the third building closer to the river. Would also have residence. We'll have three stories of housing, but under that would be a large grocery store, 14,000 square feet. It also has open parking closest to the river, and that's actually interesting and very strategic. So first of all, that parking is directly across from the senior center and how we would treat that and how we would arrange the traffic flow. Would we put in. A crossing there or further up at the corner? That's something that we would look at. But it's very strategic because we have something that's called Chapter 91 Land. Chapter 91 is water, is land that used to belong to the river, that used to be waterland. And it comes with a very, very hefty permitting process that can take upwards of 18 months. And so the idea here is that they would like to bring in this grocery store. They would like to make some commitments early on. It would be one that is of a modest size. This would not be a very large grocery store, so it's not a chain that specializes in very large stores. But because this land would remain, public parking, which is its current use, there would be no change in use of the Chapter 91 land. Which would allow this project to move dramatically faster. Anything that involved a building or change of use on this area would require an 18-month permitting process. So it both satisfies the desires of the senior center, but it also would speed things up. And allows them to make some commitments down here around the business that would go in there as well. So here are some conceptual drawings. These are all available. I can, we can share the whole slide set out as well. They're in the proposals. Some interconnected pocket parks. This was Transom's vision. They actually, what they're showing is the. You're standing at the Peace Garden and on your left would be the grocery store. And on your right, there would be a cafe. And that's how they would activate Riverside Ave. Part of what we were looking for is that for people who come to the hotel. That right now they stand there and they look at a dark alleyway and they don't think they necessarily want to go down there. And if there was a grocery store and a cafe there, they would be drawn down into Medford Square where we have a number of businesses and restaurants down the block. This is, if you see here, this is this idea of a parking garage that actually is covered in art and doesn't really look like a parking garage. Let me, so then we reviewed the proposals. Oh, there was one other thing that I did want to highlight. It's a little bit here. Is that this area between City Hall and the building they're proposing would be a bus stop. So we have been working with the MBTA on getting some rapid transit lines from Medford Square to various locations. One of them that is planned is from here through Sullivan Square to Kendall Square every 15 minutes. At all times and every eight minutes during rush hour. And part of what the MBTA needs is some facilities. For their bus drivers at the end of the line. And so Transom has agreed that there could be bus driver facilities available in this building for them. So all the members scored them. And people have asked me, particularly the two developers who I notified. Is there any one thing? And basically I would tell everybody that Transom above, across the board scored higher. And all the people who scored them, there was something else. It wasn't one thing in any one of these, but across the board. There were various things that were important to various people and. That's where we ended up with Transom having better scores across the board than Davis did in the various areas we were rating. Like I said, we did the interviews, we had questions, we did a final meeting. FXM Associates did a final evaluation of the fiscal impacts of both proposals. To help support what we were saying, that there were no financial concerns on all of them. And then the city said that we should designate Transom, the city, sorry, the team. Recommended that the city should designate Transom as the team, as the preferred developer and begin negotiations. So the long-term lease is the part, City Council would have to vote to approve that. But we're at the point now where we would start negotiating the details of this. And all of this could change. And there's some concern, is this the right place for a parking garage? Should the parking garage move? How do we manage that? In their proposal, they are actually proposing that they should build the parking garage. They would like to guarantee revenue in that parking garage by leasing back spots for some of their apartments. But they would like to turn the parking garage and its management over to the city for ownership. We asked, what about putting some offices in there? And they said, yeah, if you want to put us to put offices as part of it. So we're picturing maybe the parking office might want to have their offices directly in the parking garage. We talked with the parking director. They are comfortable with running a parking garage. I mean, they don't have the staff now, but by the time it is built. That is something that they could do. And there would be guaranteed revenue because. The buildings would lease some of the spaces back. And then some of the spaces would be available as public parking. As well as I mentioned earlier, that open lot closest to the river, at least for now, would remain open parking. Some people have said to me, could it later be developed? Yes, we would still have that. It would still be. But it would take that 18-month permitting process for Chapter 91 in order to build something on that back space. So that's part of the, all of this could move a lot faster if we leave that as the open space back there or the open parking. So we do need to go through detailed negotiations on exactly what would, we would have. So the next steps, well, we have formally notified the designated development team. We decided that they shouldn't hear from the press. They should get phone calls from us. So actually both. Both teams have heard from us. We will need to declare the property surplus to municipal requirements in order to actually sign a lease. That's a formal designation. We'll negotiate the development program, negotiate the terms of the lease, and then the lease needs to come back to you for approval, and then we would execute that. And that is the last slide. Questions?
Thank you, Director Hunt. Do we have questions or comments from members of the council? Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you. I appreciate the hard work and I know this is a long time coming, but. I think that I have just a few questions as we going through the process, and I know this is so important because this is. One bite at the apple and I'm so glad that we're doing it. So, so kudos to taking the bite. We should think it's very important, but I. You know, I know that there was, there was questions that we looked into the different, talking about those discussions of maybe. Looking into traffic flow with the rest of the square and how that would impact. You know, this, this development, we, if we talked about, is Ring Road still available? Because I'm sure. In your field, you realize that it's a laughing stock across the Commonwealth that. The joke is, what is the only, what is the only city that has a, has an access road that leaves away from the center of your town? And I think that that's what we're doing. So I like, you know, it'd be something nice to use the water and, and develop that area. Have we. You know, the other questions I would have is if we talked to.
I'm gonna forget all your.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate it. And I know that looking at the. We met with the other owners of the other buildings in Medford Square and worked with them about, about maybe. Finding a way to, to, to look at. The totality of the square and working Riverside Mall and using, in, in talking and working their vision to try to. You know, uplift the rest of that area and try to truly make it a truly redeveloped area. The other question is probably the biggest one, and you said, you, you, you talked a little bit about it because you, you know, you, you're going to cut the biggest. Complaints and concerns and issues from our seniors right now. I think that their biggest fear right now is the parking. I don't think the, the parking is, is enough that's there. I know that we've had in, in different municipalities that I've been involved in. What we've, we've worked at some creative ways and maybe possibly talking about meeting with the seniors and. And implementing a plan that makes sure that, making sure that maybe setting up a shuttle service from even, even though it's just. Right down the street, you know, it's a huge difference when you're a senior citizen and you're disabled in any way to try to make it from. Right across the street to behind the, 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 the hotel. So. Maybe I think, and I think that would be important is really reaching out because I've. I've, I've been contacted by a bunch of the seniors from the senior center and they're in an uproar and you know, they, you know, they, they, have we talked about, for instance, one. Young lady came tonight and asked, have we talked about maybe making sure that the parking goes up first?
Show my, I want to point to it. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, talking about the parking first. So, and I'm glad to see that we've been creative with the parking garage, something that. We talked about in the past. If this is something that's willing to do, how about, have we entertained possibly doing a bubble? On the top floor of the parking garage where it's a recreational space to bring in more revenue. Both as a recreational space and, and a revenue generating source. If that, if we're given the freedom to do that. So, you know, on the highway side. I, I wouldn't mind going up an extra story. To put something like that in for the fact that it's creating revenue, it's creating recreational space for our youth especially. And vital, vital space that we know that we need here. So I mean, the, these are some questions. I think that, you know, I. You know, everybody who looks at me like I'm going to be the negative person and I'm going to talk negative about everything. I think we need to move. And this is a good step, but I think that. Being cautious that this is one bite at the apple and making sure that we've exhausted everything possible and the community is really part of it. I know I've said that from the beginning of the rezoning, you know that. And I think that. Being more proactive, especially with the seniors and getting your butt kicked a little bit, it's part of the job. We all know that. But really making our senior citizens feel like they're part of this process, not alienating, because the rumors, again. Keeps coming to Counselor Scarpelli, the rumors that I'm hearing, what people think that, that there's rumors out there saying that maybe possibly we're going. maybe possibly we're going to lose the senior center completely, which is a farce, but it's something that I think having the meeting there and bringing it to that backyard and, and trying to find avenues to, just to calm everybody down and say, listen, we're thinking of you. These are options and our number one priority should be our seniors and their, their safety and their comfort and their, you know, state of mind. So I know that's a lot, but I appreciate it. It's the first time we could speak on it. So I'm, I'm really excited about, you know, the designs. I was, I, I was, I was fortunate enough to, I've said it a thousand times, that when Mayor Kurt Tony back in two thousand eight started this little, little project, that he brought me to this little despicable piece of land and he opened up a trailer and showed this amazing plan that went from one end to the other and that's still growing. So and I think that's why I bring up the fact that I'd love to see what, what options are moving throughout the whole square. So, thank you.
So, and I'm just if I could really quickly, to Counselor Scarpelli's point, something that, you know, having talked in the council in general and looked at the plans and worked with the team. In the RFP before we got proposals, so the request for proposals, we did include some additional language around the city-owned parking lots behind the strip along Riverside Avenue. And also the City Hall property itself to see if maybe we could encourage some potential expansion or renovation of this building. And we spoke with Atrius Health to see if we could leverage the parking garage. And we spoke with Hamilton, well, not me, but you spoke with Hamilton Companies about all of the property that they own on Riverside. So those were included in the process. And I think, at least for me, as I continue to participate in the process, going back at bites at those, at those apples and really trying to see if we can get them on board is going to be a priority for me. And Davis had also done some preliminary designs on potentially some upgrades to this building, which I think would be really great that maybe we could try to incorporate as well. So I just wanted to put all of that out there, that those were some things that I raised as part of the process that are still going to be a priority for me. But thank you for giving me the time and Director Hunt, I'll turn it over to you.
I'll respond to some of those. So I'll just build on that quickly. So the, we have been talking as President Zach Baer says to a number of the property owners in the area. I will tell you that I met with the owner of the Hamilton Company as well, as recently as late last week. They, there is, theirs is the building that has Ebisuia that people know about, that it does look like it needs to come down. And in fact, I have asked him to please have his con, his architect contact me as soon as he has somebody on board because they should not be designing to the zoning that exists. But actually, we would like to work directly with their architect on what they're thinking. He is open to redoing the entire stretch. He actually owns the entire set of buildings facing the river. I don't know how to describe it off the top of my head, but from here, from the parking lot, the building that exists, the health building, all the way down, not the bank building, so short of the bank building. So all of that. Being able to work with them would really open up some opportunities. We have a river street that would be great if it went all the way through his building to River Street. And that's one of the things we want to talk to him about is how could we leverage some of the city parkings and the city spaces to open that back up? Getting access to having River Street going straight through to, to the river, to the Ring Road, as you name it, the Clipper Ship Drive, as people know it now, would really help us facilitate changing the directions of the roads. We asked the developers if they had thought about that and they kind of said yes, but things were a little too rushed for them, even though they had three months to respond to really dig into that. And they're open to it. We still want to discuss it. There are a couple of very creative solutions. I don't know if it's easier for me to point to the map, but one of the things that we have thought about is, could you actually redirect the main flow of traffic? Instead of sweeping around and coming between that building and the senior center to actually cut and come up to this street here that is between City Hall and the medical building, have that be the main route? And then the area that's between this new building and the senior center, have that be emergency access only? Maybe it's just a bus lane and emergency access? And so that the seniors would have their, the, the open parking there behind the buildings by the river? And then it would just be a, an open, more of a, a bus lane that they're crossing and not a road that they're crossing to get over to the senior center. That would change up a lot of the traffic flows. That would also allow us to make this area over here between this building and the new garage, more of a plaza area? How, we have to look at exactly how the traffic would flow, but we'd like to be creative with this. And think outside of the box. It is, we do understand now that one-way streets can be a real killer for for economic development, for business districts. And so this may be the time to change the traffic flows of these streets. I do think that working with the Hamilton Company is going to be necessary to part of that. So all of that, to be said, is absolutely part of this discussion and negotiation that we're still having. We did hire a consultant to do a first look pass design for the water area. And that's part of what ended up with this pop-up park, because one of the things that really became aware is that anything permanent we wanted to do between Clipper Ship and the water was going to have to go through a Chapter Ninety-One process. Bill putting in benches or a, a water, a dock, putting in a seating wall and stuff. And that meant none of that was going to happen in a short timeframe. Anything we were going to go, do over there was going to take a long time. So we would like to do that. And we do have some draft ideas that we've put together. We've put out to the public a couple of times, some ideas. The other thing is that we did this diff that, which takes any a portion of the ta, the new revenue taxes that would come from anywhere in the square into a special account to feed back into the square. So that could help pay for some of the permitting that would be needed for the, the park area for some of the things like a new dock, that we could capture some of that money there. So that's some of the, and that's part of what is absolutely can be, is under discussion and we'll need to be discussing with them. We did think, we did ask about like space around a garage. I like the idea of a, a space on top for recreation. We had talked about how could we build a gym in? Basically, what we need to do is, how do we get enough community benefit out of this to make this amazing for the city? Without killing the project, right? What is their pain point where they say, we can't do this anymore? So that's where we are looking at this. We had thought about, could we put recreation offices over there? Could we put a gym? Like, how does this look? And I think these are all the kinds of things that we want to be talking about with them. And I think I'll just wrap it up by saying that both developers, when we met with them, felt very strongly that us doing this project is going to be transformational between this and the rezoning of Medford Square, which is now being, moving its way through the process. That will act absolutely open up and get developers interested in this. I've had other property owners, smaller buildings approach me and say, but what do we do if we have no parking? And so that's part of what we need to figure out. The Hamilton space is frankly big enough that they can be doing real parking for their spaces and they can be putting residential and stuff in there. So how do we make this work? And how do we make that building face the river? And have plazas, you can have outdoor dining facing the river and not facing Riverside Ave? Absolutely. It's a separate project, but it is very much on our radar and something that we're looking to work with. We've also, the Hamilton Company has indicated that potentially if there were other developers interested in partnering with them, they, they're not closed to that idea. They were, they were not ready to make any kind of agreement in the short window that had from when we released the RFP to when the RFP had to be closed. But they're not closed to that idea. So in fact, they had a development partner who was, was closed to that idea and they bought them out. So. Other, anything else?
Yeah, just one more. Thank you. This is a great question. One thing that, as we talked about, you know, mainstays and the, you know, the, you know, the gateways. Has the money been exhausted? I know there was money years ago for the parking garage that failed behind Colleen's, because I think that that might be having two types of, two types of anchor parking. I mean, and, and we would hate honestly to waste spot, people tell you, and you, in your field, you know that putting a parking garage is frowned upon because it's valuable space in, in a sense, but where we already have parking, have we, has there been any discussion again to rebuild that parking garage behind Colleen's?
So there was a grant, I'm going to say it was roughly twenty-ten. I do have files on it, but the city, the council at the time, which none of these members, including yourself, were on the council at the time, voted not to accept that grant. So that would have to be, plus it was fifteen years ago. So it would have to be sort of re-approached, a project like that. It is an interesting question whether there behind the Colleen's is the right location for a second parking garage or whether this would be sufficient for all of it. It's certainly something, I think that if we move this project forward, because it's ready and built this garage and said, we have parking pressure on the square and we could have more development if there was more parking. That's the kind of thing that you go back to mass development and you say, we need more city infrastructure in order to unlock more development in the city. And that's, we would go back to them for it. I think my instinct, and Claire's not here, right? If we, she might be online, but she had tried to make it to here this evening. If we were to ask them for that money right now, they would say, do you have a parking study? Can you prove it? Do this project first? Like what's, you know, where is that? And that doesn't mean that we wouldn't ask mass development for, for money. I will just sort of jump in there with, you can get mass development for infrastructure needs in order to unlock development potential. And that is part of where that RFP support came from. We have checked with our water and sewer. Tim McGivern was on this committee. And there is no concern about the city infrastructure that we own around water supply, sewer, et cetera, storm drains. I'm being able to handle this. I know some people have sort of asked, but we are confident on that in this location. And it's, if we were looking for money, it would be around re, redoing the streets and the layout of the streets and lights and stuff like that.
Great, thank you. I'll go to Counselor Callahan.
Thank you. This is a very exciting project. Really quite happy to see these plans coming together after so many years of work. Just a few comments and then a couple of questions. I know that in one of the master plans, there really was an analysis of Medford Square and the very specific types of businesses that we have there and the difference between the types of businesses that we have and the types of businesses that create a really walkable, safe, you know, kind of vibrant square that I think everyone, you know, here talks about and wishes for. And many people even look back to thirty, forty years ago with, you know, warmth about how it used to be more that way when there were bookstores and, you know, other places that people frequented. So I said that because I'm very excited with the grocery store coming in. Also very excited to see a coffee shop coming in. And, and I really also do appreciate all the work that you do in talking specifically to developers. I recently got, you know, an email from a resident asking if they can, if we can stop a bank from coming into Medford Square. Because they, they're like, we can't have more banks and insurance companies in places where you don't, you know, need to go or enjoy to go. And please, I hope no one is offended by my mention of those two specifically, but I think there are, there are many in Medford Square that are not the types that were identified in that master plan as being ones that are going to create the vibrancy we want. So I do appreciate all of the work that you are doing to, because we cannot simply dictate as a city council what people rent to and what businesses come in. But we can talk to developers and try to, you know, encourage them to bring certain types of businesses in. So I appreciate all your work there. I did want to mention also that I think one of the benefits, and I think this came up in a conversation that we had about this particular project, one of the benefits of having a garage that is not underneath the residential units, that is actually a small bit away and maybe you have to cross the street, is that I certainly hope that the residents who move in will hesitate to jump in their cars just a little bit more and be more likely to walk, to walk into Medford Square. We're talking, you know, obviously those who are young and able to do that, but hoping that people, that this creates naturally just a little bit more of a walkable square and lowers our need for, like people get very concerned about the traffic that's caused by new development and new residents moving in and new housing. And I hope that that will be a little bit ameliorated by the fact that the garage is not underneath the building of the residence. So I, I really appreciate that as a very thoughtful way to approach some of these things. I had a couple of questions. One is about the, the parking and I, I do understand that the, there are a lot of some of the seniors who are concerned that the senior center parking will not be as large. And I'm curious if any of the parking will be designated for seniors or how many of those spots will be designated as handicap spots? That might also help for those seniors who really do need for to have a spot that is very, very close to the senior center. If we, if we have a larger number of handicap spots because it is directly across the street from the senior center. So I wanted to ask about that. And then I, this is more my curiosity about your opinion based upon a lot of the zoning that we have done. But my second question is really about step, a step back. So looking at the sort of envisioning diagram that they, the, the picture that they painted of what it might look like when standing in the memorial garden, that it does create a little bit of a, sort of a corridor, like one of these wind tunnels of height. And I was curious, because in my mind, the step backs where you start off, like, you know, coming up from the sidewalk, but then the top couple of floors are actually backed away, that that might help to, you know, reduce a little bit of that feeling. And I was curious about what your thoughts were about that.
Right. So I will say it's sort of the, the detailed, exactly how many spots are here and there and how many are handicapped. I really feel that that is part of like the detailed negotiation that we start to look at as we get further into it. It would certainly be some part of the site plan review and is something that we'll be looking at and considering. But I certainly couldn't like, oh, this is how, nothing is set in stone at this point. But this is where we're looking at it. For the step backs, it is true that when you put, those are more expensive to build than building straight up. Just in the, the details of building the buildings. So developers never propose those to begin with. That is the kind of thing that we start looking at shadows and we ask them about and look and feel. And that's the kind of thing that you push into. And it's the kind of thing that we really will need to think about. Where do we want to push them for community benefits? Is a little bit larger parking garage with a few more spots? Is that more important or is it the step back? You know, like, is it another affordable unit? Like where do we? Like all of these things have costs. Can we get recreational space out of it as well? Which is honestly, is something that has been on our minds and something that we have been floating around. So it is something that we'll be talking about, we'll be looking at as the details of this. We'll have a lot more say in this than we would in a building that is a hundred percent privately proposed and developed. So those are the types of things that we will be looking at. I think that I hit the things you'd asked about. So, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of the council? Just wanted to note a kind of along those points too, that I think the flip side of some of this is how much bigger do certain elements of the project get to allow for more community benefits, right? And also like what is the financing capacity of the entity that we're working with? And so those are like two of the other things that we're kind of working through.
I, I will add that we are interested in seeing if we can do more housing and so more units. Some of the stuff that plays into this and I've seen floated around and I'm afraid that I'm going to get the numbers wrong off the top of my head. But there's a certain, so if you go over five stories, now you're getting into steel construction. And so you can do two stories of concrete, which may be like your parking garage and then five stories of wood. And if you go bigger than that, you're in steel construction. It has a completely different cost. So one of the things that I have been generally hearing is, why aren't we going taller? And I will tell you that we were very clear with the developers that all the guardrails were off. They should not be looking at our zoning, that they should be proposing what they really think they can do here. And as you go more units, you kind of do need some more parking. It is unreasonable to think that people will live immediately next to an entrance to ninety-three and not own a car, even if what they use that car for is for weekend travels, right? So there is some of that. We'll ask for zipcar spaces and things like that and Uber lift drop-off spaces as well. But it is actually true that they don't want to go too tall. Um, but it is actually true that they don't want to go too tall, um, because then they hit other things with the building code and it suddenly becomes a lot more expensive. And we hear you about the banks and can I say something about the spot that's back up the least? Um, so there was a bank coming to Medford Square and the real estate agents are now looking for a new tenant for that space. Um, so yay, and the, yes, it's the vault is back on the market. Um, and so the real estate agents do know that we would strongly prefer some other kind of businesses in that space.
To be a restaurant.
A restaurant.
Fully functioning restaurant.
With a bar that, oh, is open after the Chevalier ends. I'm, you know, we all want to stop out for a drink afterwards. Um, so we're hoping and we try, but we, you're right, we cannot prevent them from coming. Um, but, but we try to push for them.
Yeah, it's, it's the five over two. And even Davis, they, they proposed three, five over twos, but didn't go above that, even though, you know, Hyatt Place is obviously taller and the Medford Housing Authority buildings are obviously taller. And even the zoning we are going to pass is going to allow more in those spaces or zoning that's been proposed is, uh, allowing that. So, um, yeah, it's a tough, tough one. Counselor Lozareling, Counselor Singh.
Um, Counselor Sang has, okay. Uh, I just wanted to note that sometimes when, um, our residents see our zoning proposals, uh, where there are allowable taller buildings, um, it, it gets a little concerning for residents because they say, well, that's going to be so many big tall buildings, so fast, it'll be so dense. Um, and this is just a great example of what, something is allowable and it doesn't immediately happen. So just, it's, it's expensive to, to build. I mean, it, it's, it would be really hard to make something like that happen. So, uh, this is a great case in point. Um, and I just got an email from somebody who had found out that there was a bank going in where the vault used to be and asking if I could do anything to stop that. And I, I was gonna, I, I asked her if I could call her because I wanted to explain the reasoning that I've heard from business owners about why banks are a great thing to have as a tenant. They're clean, they pay their rent, they're, um, really consistent. They're not, they're never bad tenants, but, um, and you know, it's not up to us to say no, um, to, uh, an owner of a space. But of course we listen to our residents and we live here too. And we know when, uh, what it's like to live in a neighborhood that's a business that is adjacent to a business district that is full of banks. Um, we do, we do, we all need banks for a variety of things, but we don't, we don't need that many of them. Um, that being said, thank you for your work on this. I think it's a lovely proposal. Um, and, uh, I, I do appreciate that it's still a, a moving picture, um, to some degree. Uh, so thanks. And I would, if, has anybody mentioned to approve? Oh, okay. I guess I would do that. Um, thank you.
Never a bad tenant until they need a bailout. Um, Counselor Sang.
Thank you. Um, I know you all have been working really, really hard on this. I've been hearing updates here and there. And every time I hear an update, it, it's even more exciting. Um, and I, I've just gotten so many, you know, positive comments about, um, about this happening in the city and people are really excited. I mean, even if people have questions about parts of it, I think overall there's just this enthusiasm. I think I wanted to remind everyone, I, I mentioned this a few meetings ago, but, you know, the first time I was knocking indoors, Medford Square came up alive. And, um, you know, I think at the time people asked us, or asked me at least, like, why, wh- when are we going to stop planning and when are we going to start, start doing? And I think this is us doing, and I'm, I'm really, really excited about that. Um, and I think, you know, a key point is, um, I think with any big redevelopment project like this, you're never going to get one hundred percent of what everyone, um, envisions Medford Square to be, because we all have different visions and different, um, needs and priorities too. But I actually think that the transit proposal, um, reaches really high marks on what people who have very different lived experiences are asking of Medford Square. I think that's really impressive. Um, I, you know, I think I'll, you've addressed a lot of what I've heard most tonight. Um, I think I'm hearing a lot from seniors about parking, hearing, uh, and I'm glad to hear that, um, you know, we're getting, getting that parking lot and that it's not just going to be any parking lot. That it'll be a parking lot that, um, you know, the city has some say over, um, that it'll, that there'll be public art integrated too. Um, Vic Frater joked to me, you know, I, I, because, you know, there are residents who are concerned about increasing parking too. And, um, Vic Frater joked to me that with Alicia Hunt leading the charge, we're going to get the, the most environmentally friendly, most artistic, beautiful parking lot we can get.
I never heard that.
And, and if the renderings are, uh, anything to go by, I think we're definitely heading in that direction. So I am grateful for that. Um, very funny comment from him. Um, with the riverside, I think that's the riverfront opening up that capacity. I think that's something I hear just as much, to be honest. Um, I know it's really important to let folks home, at home know that, you know, the city of Medford is not in itself a private property developer. So we can't build the buildings the way that we want to see it, but we can work with developers and work with, um, property owners to nudge them in a direction that we want to see, um, to work with them to make sure that, you know, their vision is aligning with what our vision is. Um, and I'm grateful that you, you guys are doing so much of that hard work, reaching out, um, too. I guess to that point, um, I, I think it was really important for residents to hear tonight that we are working really hard to try to reorient the square towards our natural features, um, towards our strengths. Um, and I, it's, it's, I, I think it's also important to hear the timelines and the permitting processes that go behind all, a lot of these. It sounds like most of these, um, permitting, you know, steps are state law requirements. Um, is there anything besides the, what's in the kind of current zoning update on our front that is adding to that ti- timeline delay?
So it's my hope that we'll, as we finalize the zoning for this, that this will be common as a right building. So there won't be any need to go to zoning board. Because of the size of it, it will need to go to site plan review. It is my hope that we will negotiate this. So Danielle Evans and I, the senior planner, we advise the community development board. We understand what they're looking for in projects. It is our goal that this project will be legally advertised as site plan review, will go in front of them. They will look at it. It will not be the first time they've ever seen it because it'll be all over public meetings and the press. And they'll say, right, this is perfect. We're good with this. Let's go, keep going. Um, we have had projects in and out in one meeting. Um, when the developer is good, when the architects are good, I'll tell you Herb Chambers was in and out in one meeting because their stuff, they knew what we were looking for and they provided it up and, and we were done. Um, it's only when it takes many, many iterations to site plan review could drag out for months. It's usually not because we're dragging it out. Um, so I don't see any, we are keeping this as a scale. It's not on state roads that require MIPA permits. Um, because it, so we, we do think this will be able to move quickly. And actually, chapter ninety-one is why, one of the reasons why Clippership Connector took so long. And we have a couple other shared use pads, projects that we're doing with that DOT that have been hung up in state permitting, projects along the river, that's really get bogged down by state permits. Um, so, and one's on state roads. So we're hoping, I don't see any reasons why this should get bogged down other than now us negotiating the terms of this lease and the details of this project. So where, they, they asked if we could meet next week. Do we have a meeting next week, this week? We're, we're setting it. Yeah, we, uh, we're talking to them. So Sal, our economic development director, has been talking to them, trying to get a meeting set up within the next week to get this, this ball rolling.
I'm glad to hear that. I think it's really, um, important that folks at home know that, at least on our side, we are really coordinating all our efforts, the zoning effort, the, uh, Medford Square projects to make sure that things can happen as quickly as possible on our side. And, you know, the state permits, that's, that's a whole other world. Chapter ninety-one, that's a whole other world. Um, I think you've also addressed, um, I, I've also been hearing quite a lot about banks and, you know, businesses that, um, at least in our last, um, Medford Square report, were like labeled as, uh, you know, we have a lot of these, we don't need that many more, you know. Um, I think a question that residents have brought up is that instead of, why, why, why not? Instead of banning it outright, because we, you know, we still want these businesses here. Um, why shouldn't the zoning put something like, uh, a special, a special permit process for businesses that we see a lot of? And I think this is a great, with a lot of folks watching at home, this might be a forum for you to address that question.
Right. And so some of that is what you're allowed to do and not allowed to do. So a special permit can't be completely arbitrary around like, oh, we have too many. Now you, you can't be the tenth one, but you could have been the fifth one, right? You can't quite use it for that. You can use it to say, well, you know, small is okay, bigger is not, or we want them on the side streets, not the main. Like there are other, you know, they're, they're more used for uses where they could be difficult on the, the neighbors. The problem is banks are boring, if I might, but they're not, like we were saying, actually bad neighbors. The bad part is that it's dark in the evening and it's not good for economic development, but they're not loud and rowdy and they don't stink. And, you know, like they're not up that kind of a problem neighbor. Um, and there are such things as banking deserts. There are places where people can't get easily to a bank. I think we don't see it as much now that so much is online. Um, but the reality is that people who need to walk to a bank, need to walk to a bank or like to walk to a bank. Um, and you don't want to accidentally then create a banking desert. I think that if we said like, we don't allow banks in our business districts, some bank is going to come along and, uh, try to take us to court over that. Like it just feels like an overreach. So our goal is to, we do recruit, recruit, Sal actively recruits businesses, we meet with businesses. I will tell you that we do not have trouble with businesses not wanting to come to Medford, either Medford Square or any of the other districts. Um, I don't remember which meeting I said this in recently or Sal said it. It's, there are a couple of spaces where we have very long-term empty spaces and those spaces are not empty because nobody wants to rent them. They're empty because what the landlords are asking is too much or they're not responsive. And we have tried to get in touch with these landlords and try and work with them and they don't want to hear from us. Um, but we have businesses that absolutely want to move into West Medford, to Medford Square, to all over Medford. We don't have trouble with that piece of it. We've actually been working with some real estate agents. And so we encourage you, if you know businesses that want to come to Medford, to talk to Sal. Because also what we have been doing is we are sometimes aware of businesses that might be willing to lease their space or might be willing to move or downsize and let someone else come in there and they're not actively on the market. Um, and so sometimes we're able to make some of those pairings up as well. Um, so that's, that's really exciting. Like you might have noticed the new pinball parlor in Medford Square. This, that space they're in, that was not on the market. That was the landlord deciding that he wanted to bring that business in and let deep cuts expand like that. Um, so we are also aware of some of these opportunities that will try and bring businesses in and do some matchmaking. And we have staff to do it now.
Thank you so much. I think, again, if there's anything that we can help with, you know, this, for at least the city council, while I know the city council is very supportive, um, and, um, you know, we'll have questions.
I should have asked for the, the surplus, uh, uh, vote tonight. I'm in such a good mood.
Look, I, I mean, I think, um, any, any time that we can get together and talk about these issues, I know residents really do appreciate it. Um, you know, even if we're asking questions that are just clarifying points that we know a little bit about. I think, um, it becomes a great moment for our city to, to get that information.
Great. And we have our office, people don't have to speak to me directly, call our main line, talk to our staff. Several more of the staff are here to talk to you this evening on other topics. So I don't want to belabor this too much, but we also particularly have a new economic development planner, um, who is part of her role is going to be helping small businesses. So if small businesses aren't sure how to navigate city hall, that's part of what she's going to do is help them with figure out this process as well. And I'll just also let you all know that we hired a new housing planner who started this week as well. Last week, last week was her first week. So, Medford resident, very exciting.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you all. Um, yeah, and I think, um, you know, we're going to try to go as big as we can and make sure that whatever we do, either enables some of the longer term things that we talked about, or at least doesn't block them and sets us up for those future discussions. So I'm really looking forward to continuing to work on that with you guys. And I know we'll have another update for the council, hopefully, you know, next few months.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And there's a motion from Council Zara to receive and place on file, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Callahan. Do you have any further discussion by members of the council? Or members of the public, either in person or raise your hand on Zoom. If one person on Zoom. Marie, name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Hi, it's Marie Izzo, Pilgrim Road, Medford, Mass. I'm wondering if it, is it too early for me to ask about what level of affordability will be available for renters? And these are all renter rentals, correct?
The units are all rentals and the proposal was twenty percent of the units affordable at eighty percent AMI. Um, but that's not the final answer. Um, and there's either potential for more units. You know, if we, if it's big, a bigger project, maybe more units at that level, or maybe a change in the distribution of the affordability requirements. I don't know if you have anything more on that, Director Hunt? Great. Nope, we're good. Uh, any, any more questions, Marie, on that?
Well, just, I mean, if you could clarify exactly what is eighty percent of AMI for rental? Either for, um, so that people have an I, an idea of what a rent would be like as an affordable rent? Because I don't think we know that as a public.
Absolutely. So sorry to use that term. Um, eighty percent of the area median income, and that changes depending on this household size. And it looks like Director Hunt. And it also changes every year. Um, but Director Hunt has the income. And then just before you read the income, I believe it's, the way it works is it's, it can be a maximum of thirty percent of your income, but I'll just let you.
Right. So, um, to be clear, when we talk about affordable units, we, we're not talking about naturally occurring affordable, like they're not just cheap, but they're actually deed restricted, which means that they get, um, and the city asks for them to be eligible for the state housing inventory of deed restricted affordable units. And so along with that, they will be lotteryed out. We, um, as part of the lottery, uh, you have to be income qualified. We have the ability to ask for a certain amount of those to be, um, designated for Medford residents first. And the state has to approve the amount that we want to be, if we want any of it to be special for Medford residents, the state has to approve that. We have been successfully justifying and getting approved for the last at least five years, but possibly ten years, um, seventy percent of the spaces to be for Medford residents first, as opposed to a, a fully public lottery. Um, so we will be pursuing that as well. Um, and then a deed restricted affordable unit, you do have to prove your income qualifications. You have to, it also looks at your assets. Um, the twenty twenty-five, so eighty percent, so this is also by region. And sorry, I thought I had up, uh, we're in the area called the Quincy uh, area, right? Yep, let me just check in that. Uh, so in Middlesex County right now, the eighty percent limit this year, if you're a household of one, is ninety-two thousand dollars. If you're a household of four, it's a hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred dollars is what eighty percent of area median income is. Um, so the idea is that if a hundred percent of median income would be the median income in the area, and this is eighty percent of that, so you could then go down fifty percent would be people who have lower incomes, thirty percent would be very low income. Um, so those numbers are not very low in our area.
So we're not, we're not really addressing the issue of what people can actually afford based on income in Medford, is that correct?
That does come into it that you actually have to be in an income band. Because if you make too little, then you can't afford your share unless you have a section eight. Because if you make too little, then you can't afford your share unless you have a section eight voucher. So section eight vouchers will allow you to then, uh, they will subsidize you up to a certain, up to market rate. Whereas if you just are an affordable unit, then you must make enough money such that the rent is not more than thirty percent of your income. Um, and I will tell you that Medford then monitors all of these. We spot check all the affordable units every year. It's part of the housing planner's job. And we, um, if the, those buildings that have affordable units want to raise the rent on the affordable units, then we actually have to approve those rent raises. We can't unreasonably deny rent raises. But we also will review them and make sure that they're reasonable so people aren't getting hit with really large, rental raises. I'm going to look back and say, did I get that good enough? Okay. Teresa was doing the rental verifications for us for a while, so.
I think, uh, Marie, to your larger question, like the question of, you know, what is something that a person can afford to rent? Is part of the discussion of like, well, eighty percent of AMI is very high. Should we look at fifty percent of AMI or thirty percent of AMI? And that would pretty significantly reduce the, the deed restricted rent amounts. The problem is that it also reduces the revenue and that reduces the ability to finance the project. And because of how, you know, we're doing this, we're getting public benefits because we're leasing the land. Um, and that is a portion of the cost, but a huge portion of the cost of housing is the construction cost. And, um, the state does not, certainly the federal government and state government do not provide money for us to do that. They also don't allow cities to, for example, take out bonds to fund the construction of housing. And that could, you know, that maybe could be a choice that the city could say, if that was an option afforded to us, we could maybe try to be a part of financing this project, but the state doesn't allow us to do that. So we're kind of, you know, reliant, uh, again, around financing, um, issues here, so.
But if it is leased as opposed to having to purchase the land, I would assume that the developer will be making plenty of money, um, to be able to then, you know, give people the opportunity, you know, we, we have like no workforce housing, which is what we need the most. And we don't seem to be addressing that at all. Um, and again, this is a lease, this is not a purchase. So I just don't understand why we can't, you know, go in sort of at a more deeper level and really address the needs of the community.
It's definitely going to be part of the conversation. The lease payment, I think, proposed by Transom is about a million dollars a year.
Which is nothing compared to the cost of land to, to anyone else other than a developer like this. So that, that's a concern for me.
I mean, I think we'll have to look at the, um, I mean, we could, there's a financial proposal that's part of the request for proposal. We're not doing this to give the developer a windfall, like that's not the intent of this. But the purchase cost of the land versus the lease cost of the land versus like as a proportion of the cost of the project is smaller than you would think. The land is not like half the cost of the project. The construction costs are the vast majority of the costs, at least from the.
No, no, I, I totally understand that. I totally understand that. But private people are spending much more than this developer is for that level of land with the number of units that they're going to be able to, to construct there. And I would assume this is our luxury housing, except for what we're calling affordable, which isn't affordable at all for Medford folk, anyway, from what I gather.
It is, it is relative, is twenty, twenty-five percent, you know, it's twenty percent affordable. It's twenty-five percent more affordable units than are required by the inclusionary zoning. We've been going back and forth.
I understand. I'm just speaking to the actual income of one person making almost a hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, getting that benefit, um, to be, you know, and, and people that are making fifty thousand dollars, which are the people in this city.
I know.
Not being able to afford to live here, which is the big issue that we have in this city. It's not about whether or not we're going to be able to build anything or not. It's more like we can't afford to keep our children, you know, housed here, one way or the other. You know, whether it's to be able to, to buy or to be able to rent. You know, so they're having to go elsewhere. And I think that's key regardless of sort of what, you know, the goals are related to, you know, the developers. And that's a big concern.
Yeah. I, I just, I do want to let some other people, uh, go, Marie, and I'm always happy to. I'm always happy to talk about it more and I think just the, the thing I would say is the affordable housing piece was a big component of the proposal. It's going to be a big proponent, like component of, um, the negotiation. And, you know, we're going to do our best as part of the, um.
I hear you. I just don't think it's sufficient. That's all, that's all I, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Paul Garrity. Paul, name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Uh, good evening. My name is Paul Garrity. I live in Forty Cedar Road in Medford. And I kind of want to continue, uh, Ms. Izzo's, uh, statements there. My question is, is that, uh, does the project have a specific revenue plan? Uh, and I think it ties into the previous question. Say, what kind of money do we need to support, uh, the objective? If the objective is to increase affordable housing, you know, what is the revenue stream that we're going to be working with over the life of the lease? And, uh, my question is, is that can someone talk a little bit more about what is the revenue plan? Or what will be the revenue plan, uh, for this project going forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I can go to Director Hunt, but there is a financing plan that's part of the proposal. Um, it outlines in pretty significant detail what the proponent expects to, receive in rents, both from the affordable units and the non-affordable units, the market rate units, how those, um, are coming in over time. Uh, there is a, and it goes out at least thirty years, I think, longer than that. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more about the specific financial proposal?
I, I did not prepare stuff on it and I don't want to misspeak on it. We did have FXM Associates review their financial proposal and their financing to make sure that they agreed that this was sufficient, um, that they were going to recoup enough profit in order to put back into this, to maintain these buildings. To be clear, it's not the city's financing plan. We are not getting the income to build affordable housing. The developer is going to be building and managing the housing on this. There will be linkage payments to the city as part of this. There will be building permit fees. Um, and there will be taxes, new growth in addition to annual lease payments to the city.
Yep. And the, I mean, I think the easiest answer to the question on the financing plan is if the developer can, I mean, subject to having the equity and the banks, you know, the financing to do it. If the developer can build more market rate units, then they can provide more public benefits, whether that's more affordable units or other public benefits or affordable units at a deeper level of affordability. But that's kind of the, we're still in the, um, really tough catch-22 situation here where, um, this is privately financed and it's privately financed by private finance institutions that are seeking a profit. It is not a publicly financed project. By leasing the land, we're getting some more public benefit, um, because of how we're doing it and because we're, we are a stakeholder. But it's different than, say, if we were having a nonprofit developer trying to help us finance this and having the money for it, or especially if there was, you know, government financing available, public financing or funding available, that would be a completely different conversation. So it's essentially a version of what we do with our inclusionary zoning on private land, but just somewhat improved in a sense because it's also a lease of this public land. I don't know if you want to add to that at all. Um, okay. Paul, um, I'm just going to go with Josh.
Uh, Counselor, my, my question though is that, uh, what I'm concerned is that if one of our goals is to increase affordable housing, is the final plan going to be such that it can reflect carrying those costs as well as the maintenance of the, of the buildings and all the, the associated costs with, you know, taking care of them? I think my concern here is that if the major point here was to get affordable housing here, I think the revenue plan needs to deal with that directly as well as ancillary costs to maintain the buildings for the next, next number of years.
Right. And that is the developer.
And, and that's, that's the developer's financing plan. So if they can have more affordable housing, you know, if they can get the equity to do that, then more, more or deeper, more affordable units or units at a deeper affordability or both would be on the table. I'm going to go to Joshua. Joshua, um, name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes. Oh, God. Sorry about that, everyone. Any further public comment? I'll go to Director, uh, to Counselor Callahan.
Thank you. I really appreciate, um, the constituent who was bringing up the specifics of the, um, affordable housing. Uh, I just wanted to make a short comment, which is that if you actually run the numbers, I will say, I was a little surprised that, um, eighty percent of AMI is ninety-two thousand. That's higher than I thought. And if you run the numbers at ninety-two thousand, thirty percent of that per month is two thousand, three hundred. And I assume that's one person, so that'd be a one-bedroom. I'm making a guess because between a hun, ninety-two and a hundred and thirty-two K, which you said was one person and four person, eighty percent of AMI, making a guess for, for two people, um, that it's around a hundred and eight. I don't know if that's accurate, but something like that. That would, that would be around like twenty-seven hundred a month for a two-bed. I'm just like actually running the numbers and these numbers don't, to me, appear to be much different from market rate.
They are significantly below market rate for new construction.
Well, well, hang on, hang on. So, and I understand that you're saying market rate for new construction. So I, I just want us to be sensitive to the fact that if, if this is close to market rate for a lot of our existing housing, um, then making, calling this affordable when it's new construction, like, I, I just want us to be sensitive to this idea that like, you know.
I think a lot of people say affordable, they say small A affordable, and this is big A affordable. It's legally the definition of subsidized housing inventory affordable.
Sure. And, and I think that is in fact what I'm bringing up, which is I think that people in the city want colloquially affordable housing, right? They don't want something that fits the legal definition of affordable housing. If it's not actually creating more housing in our city that is going to be affordable for people, I mean, even at eighty percent of AMI, let alone, um, what, uh, the constituent was mentioning of people who aren't at eighty percent AMI. Like, I hope that we can consider having some, some steps, um, or something, that's all. And I know it's a conversation, but, you know, I think being like actually looking at the numbers and being open with, you know, the public about what numbers we are looking at and, and whether we're creating lowercase a, colloquially understood to be affordable housing, I think is an important discussion.
Right. So part of it is, there is a housing crisis and this is exactly the definition. You'd be stunned at how expensive, uh, units are these days. But one of the theories is that when you build new housing, the people who are in the older housing and can afford the new housing will move into it and that will free up spaces for the, in the older housing for people. Now, the hope is that those don't then get snatched up and renovated and turned into expensive housing as well. It's one of the things that we're actually hoping to see with the tough storm, where that's going to be moving approximately six hundred and fifty soph juniors and seniors out of housing, mostly in Medford and Somerville into there. And that's going to free up rundown cheap housing, because that's where the students are living these days. And we're hoping that this will become more available to residents who need lower-cost housing, for example. But that's the idea, that you build new stuff, the people in the older buildings move into the new buildings and then the older buildings are like, oh no, we have nobody to live here. And so then they keep the rents lower to bring people in. But because of the housing crisis, we are just seeing people are snatching up everything.
Yes. And, and I, and I don't disagree that like we also have a very specific issue in Medford, which is we have a lot of older folks, we have the largest, by my understanding from the senior center and the Council on Aging, is that we have the largest proportion sort of cohort of seniors that we have ever had. Um, and a lot of them, you know, especially, I've, I've talked to tons of them, they live in, uh, they live in a four, five-bedroom home and they're by themselves or with two people and they, they don't actually even want that, but there's nowhere in Medford to go. So I appreciate that this will resolve that issue. But I think creating affordable housing is its own question. Um, and that I would love for the city council and, you know, the planning department and the mayor and everyone to sort of grapple with in a real way, um, that I hope we aren't just creating more housing and hoping that that theoretically resolves a lot of our problems, but that we, we actually make some efforts to create affordable housing in the different variety of ways that it can be. And I don't necessarily mean create as in built. I just mean that, you know, whether that's the rural community land trust, whether that's the Affordable Housing Trust, whether, you know, there's many avenues, I think. Doing our best to create housing that is lowercase a affordable is something that I hope we can, can focus on.
And one of the things we asked for in this was we said, we are looking for housing. We're not looking, looking for luxury housing, we're looking for smaller units. We're looking for things targeted at seniors and targeted at, for example, graduate students, young professionals from Tufts. Tufts is going to start running a shuttle to Medford Square. I don't know if everybody heard that, but with the opening of the new dorm, they've committed to a shuttle to Medford Square. That is also something that would, uh, help young staff at Tufts be able to live here. And so we've asked them to think about more smaller units rather than fewer big luxury units, because that's what we need to see more of in the city. So, and we, we push that with developers fairly frequently.
And we did solicit a lot of different bids, you know, if a nonprofit housing developer had bid on this, would be in a different conversation probably because it's probably who we would have gone with.
And they looked at it and they, some of them did in fact attend the walkthrough, but they did not bid on it.
And, you know, I mean, I think, right, you're, you're completely right and Marie's completely right and others are completely right that, like, the market has failed and the government is not intervening in the failure of the market. And then the question is, do you do nothing and hope that a different government will set different rules? Like, how much do you want to try to wait out, like the, a public housing renaissance and a social housing renaissance in this country? Or do you try to preserve as much existing naturally affordable housing as you can by at least trying to meet market demand? And I think we're in a, in a difficult situation with that. So like, I completely agree. And it's, as for me, many, you know, five years up here, really hard that these kinds of decisions are put on us at this level of government because the state and federal government are completely ignoring and absent and in some cases, making the situation a lot worse. That's why I brought up like the, if the state just allowed like us to use municipal bond rates, that would open up some financing options here, even if it wasn't like us actually paying back the bonds themselves, just if the city could help finance it at those rates, right? Like, that would be a, a game changer versus like these guys had to go out and find two hundred million dollars in financing at the current rates. So, um, it's tough and it's hard. Uh, there's one more comment. Molly, could you just start your video before I let you speak? All right. You seem to be a real person. You're upside down, but I trust you're not going to zoom bomb me. Uh, Molly, name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, uh, Molly Dressel, twenty Hancock Street. I'm sorry, can I turn my video off because I feel it's really distracting.
Yeah, no, yes. That was just a verification.
Okay. Sorry about that. Uh, yeah, I've been living here for seven years and I've been a local seven-union ironworker for six of those years. Um, and I've never had a job opportunity in Medford. I've worked in the surrounding areas like Somerville High School, Union Square, L-Y station. Um, I think there's something coming up in Everett. And I know that in Medford, we've done some steel building, like the Great American Beer Hall and the Herb Chambers, but all has been non-union. Um, I know Tufts University. but all has been non-union. I know Tufts University is the carpenters are picketing out there right now, and they're about to build all those dorms. And I know that's not out to bid yet, but I'm doubting that it's going to go union. So I guess I'm just here today to be a voice for the union members and advocate that these projects coming up prioritize union labor. I'm recognizing that it usually comes at a higher price, but the unions like Local Seven are ensuring that the workers have proper training and certifications needed to do the work correctly. Construction work is a dangerous trade. The unions are fighting to secure fair wages for us and benefits without discrimination. So it's all about protecting the workers and ensuring their safety. This includes utilizing the proper safety techniques and complying with OSHA, thereby making a safer job site for the workers and also the surrounding community while the construction is taking place. I think rebuilding right around City Hall and using union labor would make a strong statement that Medford supports the unions and recognizes their importance, especially right now when work is really hard for us to come by. So I'm just here to say that we're here, we need the work, we need to provide for our families, we have the skill and the proper training to get things done safely and efficiently. And just a quick note on, I know that Alicia was saying a lot of the buildings are gonna be wood and under five stories, but you know, a lot of other places smaller are also going for steel now for a very good reason of the long term benefits. You know, it won't rot or warp like wood will, it can better withstand natural disasters, it's resistant pests and the elements, especially being right by the water. And for longevity purposes, it could also provide the ability to expand in the long term, maybe if you want to add on more stories to the existing to the new buildings that you're making. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. And I know that's going to be an issue that we try to balance as well as part of the project. And we're gonna, do you have anything more you want to add on that, Director Hunt?
I'd just say I appreciate the comment, and it's good to hear that, and we will take that into account and discuss with the developers.
We would love some big, beautiful steel buildings. I can tell you that. All right, we had a motion to receive and place on file by council Lozaro, seconded by councillor Callahan. Councillor Scarpelli.
Probably the PowerPoint that was on Ted.
Can you share that with us?
Thank you so much.
I don't have it. If you can share it with me, if you share with the clerk, actually. Thank you.
It was very helpful to share with people. Thank you.
On the motion, Mr. Clark, when you're ready, please call the roll.
It's receiving place.
Yeah.
Councillor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Council Lozaro. Council Lemming is absent. Councillor Scarpelli. Councillor Singh. President Bears.
Yes. Sixty affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. Twenty five zero seven eight amendments to the parking ordinance, section seventy eight, one seventy three. I don't know, Director Hunt, are you on any of this, or? Okay, it's fine. So as a member of the traffic commission. Yeah, so we had a there was a committee of the whole meeting, the chief of staff talked about it. This is a proposal to repeal an ordinance section on municipal employee and municipal business parking. Because the traffic commission is now putting in regulations around municipal parking to address the parking shortage at City Hall and people parking at City Hall for non-municipal business. And the request is to repeal this ordinance so that there's no conflict between the traffic commission regulations and the city ordinance. Is there anything else you'd want to add on that, Alicia?
If there are questions, I am familiar with this from traffic commission, so I can answer it.
And I know that chief, I think the chief of staff and the parking director talked about this with folks in committee, the whole, I wasn't able to attend that meeting. It's my first miss this year, but I wasn't able to be there. Is there anything else that folks were at that meeting want to add about the proposal or anything that I missed from the discussion at that meeting? Okay.
President Bears.
President Council.
Yeah.
That's the biggest thing people thinks when calls I got was this means we're taking public parking away from when not.
No.
So just so that's all this that it's pretty self explanatory.
Yeah, it's it's actually in here pretty specifically about the above changes allow the city to update the signage at City Hall and enforce parking restrictions. Currently, we have commuters who are parking in the lot and using the bus or walking over to Harvard Vanguard. So they're not using the Harvard Vanguard lot, and they're not using the commuter lot. They're using City Hall, and it's making it hard for employees and people who want to do business at City Hall to do business.
Support this.
Vice President Collins.
Thank you, President Bears. I think all of the important points have been stated already, but I was present at this meeting. Talked about it with chief of staff Nazarian and director McDermand, and they emphasized that this was really just a targeted change to make sure that visitors to City Hall and City Hall employees can access the parking that they need to go to City Hall and do business and go to their jobs. Not intended to be punitive, and the committee did ask for a guarantee that it wouldn't just be all of a sudden tickets are being issued. There's going to be a substantial, you know, informational period and warning period and issuing warnings before they start doing enforcement related defined. So really not intended to be punitive, just want to make sure that people who need to park at City Hall are able to do so, and the large amount of public parking that is, you know, next to that lot is still, for the moment, public parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve for first reading? On the motion of councillor saying to approve for first reading, seconded by councillor Callahan. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Councillor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Council Lozaro. Council Lemming is absent. Councillor Scarpelli, yes. Councillor Singh, President Bears.
Yes, sixty affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. Twenty five zero seven nine appropriation of free cash for car park. Let's take both of you. Let's talk about it all at once, even though there's two papers for car park. I'm guessing it's for the same reason. So we have an appropriation of free cash and a CPC appropriation for car park. And then Teresa will just do the community garden piece when. Yeah, all right. So we have from the mayor, a request for sixty five thousand contingency funding for his two car park renovation. And this is a funding match with the CPA is also a funding match. So I'll go to Planner Centella.
Hi, thank you so much for having me, Amanda Centella. I work in the Office of Planning Development and Sustainability for the city, and I work on parks projects. Good to see you all. So I think everyone here is very familiar with the car park project, but if you want me to go into more detail, just let me know. We are within phase two of the renovation, which is currently underway. We started construction in February, and if that work will continue until the end of this calendar year. Quick recap, it includes a lot of cool stuff, playground, dog park, two basketball courts, one is open air, one has a shade structure over top with solar panels, a skate park, a small splash pad, teen and fitness areas and more. What I'm, what we're presenting tonight is a request for some contingency funding for the project. So contingency funding is really important. It allows for, as a project is underway, for the project team to make swift decisions about what to do when unforeseen issues arise or new conditions sort of present themselves. It's considered a best practice to have, and I took a look at other projects of comparable scales in the city that were actually performed by the same contractor that we've done. So Gillis Field Car Park Phase One and McGlynn Playground, and took a look at how much contingency funding we used on each of those projects. It ranged a bit from like two point three to four percent of the total project budget. And so this appropriation ask is in combination with the CPA asked to follow agency funds that we've already dedicated to the project from linkage funding would amount to about three point six percent of the project budget. So kind of right within that range. The right now in the project, we're in the phase where we're underground, which in my experience is where you encounter kind of the most unknowns. You know, we have city records and things like that, but sometimes you really don't know what's there until you dig into it. Case in point, we found under our existing tennis and basketball courts, a set of full athletic courts from many years ago that we had to remove and demolish buried underneath the ground. So you know, you just run into some unknowns, and having contingency funding is a surefire way to be able to address those needs in a timely way. And I keep mentioning timing because when construction is active, timing is key. Sometimes delays of even a couple of days incur costs. And a lot of it, the sequencing of this project, we have, as I listed out, so many wonderful things going into a compact space, and so you have lots of different types of installments happening. And that means you're scheduling a lot of different types of it work and crews on the site. And when you have a delay on one thing, it kind of has this ripple effect of delaying everything else. So I'll pause there and just see if folks have questions about the nature of the ask. The free cash request is for sixty five thousand dollars, and the following CPA request is as a match of sixty five thousand for a hundred and thirty thousand total.
Any questions from members of the council? I just have one. What was the contingency percentage? If if we didn't like, we didn't approve this, what was the contingency?
If we didn't approve this, we had, let's see, so we already dedicated forty six thousand to the project, which we have essentially expended at this point.
Okay.
And it would be point oh nine percent.
So a lot less than that two point, what'd you say, two point three to four, two point six?
Yes, two point three to four percent is the range of just comparable projects.
And if the contingency funds aren't used, then they go back to the source?
Yes.
And in this case, would they go evenly back to the source, or have you talked about that?
So one of you want to speak?
Hi, manager Teresa Dupont. I also work here at City Hall, just for the record. But yes, we we actually decided at the CPC that we encourage any sort of funding that's left over to be split evenly back. So if there's a hundred thousand dollars left, which would be great, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, I go back to free cash, fifty thousand, I go back to the CP offers.
So don't dig up any more problems. All right. Any further questions from members of the council? See none. Do we have any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing no hands in person or on Zoom, is there a motion? On the motion to approve by councillor Callahan, seconded by councillor Lozaro, it was a dead tie, and I was looking at councillor Lozaro, which felt unfair. So motion to approve the free cash appropriation by councillor Callahan, seconded by councillor Lozaro.
Sixty five thousand dollars, yes.
Yes.
Councillor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Council Lozaro. Council Lemming is absent. Councillor Scarpelli. Councillor Singh. President Bears.
Yes, sixteen one absent, the motion passes. And if you want to stick around for the next, you know, we'll happily entertain you. But so there was only one little thing in addition to the, there was a.
In addition to the car park phase two, and procedurally for the future, whenever we have two separate appropriations, would you like to see those as separate motions? Okay. So we we are here to make, in addition to the sixty five thousand dollar appropriation request for car park, we're also here asking for appropriation, the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars to go to the Medford Community Gardens. This is actually going to be for a project that is kind of new. We're very excited to see it, a pop up community garden here in Medford Square. And I want to address that the garden itself, and I actually thank you, Teresa, I'm reminding myself that I have slides that I can share just to give some visuals. I'll be very, I'll be quick here. But the it would actually be placed on one of the parcels that was being discussed earlier for redevelopment. So the nature of this project is temporary. Apologies here. Share screen. Thousand windows open here, so let's minimize real quick. Thank you. So the garden here would actually be placed on an empty parcel. I'm just going to skip ahead of my slides here to show exactly the location here. This actually, it's the site of the former farmer's market for folks who've been here for more than fourteen years or so. I myself haven't been, but so it's located adjacent from the senior center. And as you can see here in the pictures, if you're facing it, it's City Hall's there in the back. So I'll back up here and just kind of give a quick overview of this. Again, temporary in nature, because we want to test out the need for this particular area of the of the community as well as to in the future, take it and test it out amongst other areas of neighborhoods here. It would be a total of twenty eight beds. Water sourcing, they're they're going to get creative with some rain barrels, as well as exploring some options from the DPW to provide a permanent water source there. Happy to go into more detail here, but we feel like this is a really prominent, highly visible location in the city to help promote and just some outreach for community gardens. So it's an educational, it's a vibrancy coming to the to the R square here and for for short money. And we would ask for your support in this project.
Also the site of the former carnival.
Oh, how long ago was that?
Too long. Councillor Callahan, and then we have a motion from councillor Scarpelli to councillor Callahan.
Thank you. So this five thousand five hundred dollars. Is this going, is this adding to a fund to make this happen, or is that the whole amount to make this happen?
That's a great question. It is not the full funding amount for this project. The the garden commission will be doing some fundraising. The committee, the community preservation committee elected to fund the reusable portions of of this project. There are costs associated with renting some fencing, some temporary fencing to secure the the garden as well as loom and soil. The committee felt that that would not be an appropriate appropriate use of CPA funds to pay for those temporary nature things. So we are funding the infrastructure, if you will, and the gardens will be fundraising for the remaining garden, soil, fencing.
It, I will say, it does strike me that like this project is like five thousand dollars and replacing the HVAC system in the school is twenty five million dollars. I mean, I understand that these things are real, but like, wow.
I I haven't been long in the municipal arena, and I feel that way every day. How much did you do this? Yes, we're we're happy that we can stretch our CPA dollars to to fulfill this project.
Yep. And just to note, these were both unanimous votes of the CPC to recommend, and the conditions you mentioned about the community garden were mentioned here.
I am excited about it. Thank you.
Great. I just have one question actually for Amanda, which is kind of why I asked you to say I'm so sorry. And it's you don't need to answer it for too long. Do you think that the fact that those courts were buried is the reason that like the courts above ended up becoming like cracked and broken and stuff?
It's possible. I'm not an engineer, but when you have different well, the soil in that area is terrible. There's a lot of like organic material, which means that it settles at different rates. And then add to that the fact that you have these like concrete and base course bits kind of in the mix. You're having different parts of what's up top settle at different at different rates, and that causes cracking over time.
And that's something you're accounting for in this project. Yeah.
Yes. So one of the cool, it was cool to watch, one of the things that we were doing specifically under the basketball court with the shade structure, because that's a heavy structure, is these special ground improvements where you dig into the ground very deeply, and you create these empty columns, and then you fill the columns with gravel and shake it, and it compacts the gravel. And so you you're creating these like strong sort of pillars within the ground to keep it from moving around so much. So that's one of the things that we're doing and regrading the site a bit, using, you know, new fresh materials for some of the heavier portions of the site.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. On the motion of councillor Scarpelli to approve the CPC appropriation request, seconded by councillor Callahan, Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Councillor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Council Lozaro. Councillor Lozaro. Councillor Lemming is absent. Councillor Scarpelli.
60 affirmative, one absent.
Oh, we'll get two more.
Oh, sorry.
Councillor Singh. President Bears.
Yes. Well, you know, 60 affirmative, one absent, the motion passes.
Thank you very much for your support.
Saw which way that one was going. Thanks, you guys. Great. It's a, it's like a first term trigger of some kind. I think you were the last in the alphabet at the time. Councillor Scarpelli. 25081 submitted by the mayor, approval for a lease purchasing finance agreement for the school security upgrades. We do have our assistant superintendent, Peter Cushing with us. He's been with us all night. Thank you, Peter, for sticking with us. And this is on the agenda because we approved the, the funding for this, a free cash appropriation. And it turns out there's a state law that requires us to also, for specifically for lease to own agreements, we have to pass a separate thing. So I'll go to Peter to explain that a little more.
Yeah, so the governing body, when it comes to overall finances, my understanding is always that the governing body of the public schools is the school board, which is true. But when it comes to a five-year lease option, which will bridge numerous, this is five. We need the approval of this august body to approve that. I'll give you a quick background. I know I mentioned it. I think it was last week that I was here, but tonight I've traveled from softball to home, back to the Ipswich Town meeting. So I'm very specifically engaged this evening. The, the point of the matter is, is that we started out with this on state contracts, which gives us a 20% discount. We've negotiated, or I've negotiated, but who's negotiated up to a 28% discount with significant other add-ons, including, I believe, 32 vape sensors that are being given to the district for the term of this, as well as, and then will be ours own outright once the end of, so there'll be no payments on those vape sensors. I might be off on the number just a little bit, but it is a high number that we have hard negotiate. This is a comprehensive security upgrade that will address cameras in all areas of our schools, electronic access at our doors, security vestibules, and other things that really are not purview of a public discussion, but will be executive committee type work. But I want to know that this is a, this is a significant investment of time, effort, and negotiating skill to bring in a project several hundred thousand dollars less than we were at a few years ago when we looked at this and added significant value, that being in particular the security vestibules, vape sensors, and just another comprehensive security tool that is going to really be an asset to the district moving forward. I really would appreciate the vote of this body. We've worked extraordinarily hard since last Friday when we got legal opinions on contracts to land those Motorola where they need to be. The hope is that they will be able to be entered into DocuSign through the Cameron office tomorrow and be able to move forward.
Great. Thank you, Peter. And just to note the specific language, dear President Bears and city councillors, our respect for the request and recommend that your honourable body vote to authorize a lease purchase financing agreement up to, under chapter 44 of section 21(c) of the general laws for the acquisition of security equipment upgrades for member public school buildings for which an appropriation was approved by a vote of the city council on April 29, 2025, council paper number 25066. The term of such agreement not to exceed five years. And further, that the school committee shall be authorized to enter into such agreement and any related documents on behalf of the city. Thank you for your kind attention to these matters, respectfully submitted by Anna-Linda Carden, Mayor. So that is the item before us. Do we have any comments or questions? On the motion of councillor Scarpelli to approve, seconded by, seconded by councillor Lozaro. Any public discussion? Sure. On this? Okay. I assume you had a studied opinion on 4421(c). Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Councillor Lozaro. Councillor Lemming is absent. Councillor Scarpelli. Councillor Singh. President Bears.
Yes, 60 affirmative, one absent, the motion passes. Public participation, to participate outside of Zoom, please email ahird@medfordma.gov. We did have a paper from Ann Driscoll. Do we have Ann? On the meeting? Ann, I don't think you're here in person. Ann, are you on Zoom? Is there a motion to? Yeah, what do you think? Can we, we can just carry it over? We're just going to carry it over. So we can just go to open public participation, name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. You can come to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom.
Sure. Mikey Heselman, 499 Main Street. I feel compelled to come and make in person many of the comments that I have emailed you all as a group collectively about over the last few weeks. And it's unfortunate because otherwise this has been a really pleasant city council session with really fun, cool stuff. Nevertheless, we live in increasingly dangerous times with increasing federal overreach and lawlessness coming from, from our federal government. Every, every day, it feels like there is a new example of extreme federal overreach and blatantly illegal behavior that is continuing to go unchecked. It's being, and it's increasingly becoming normalized, which is in and of itself horrific. We have secret police effectively that are roaming around picking up people without due process, without providing warrants, without providing any sort of judicial order. And before I get flack about this, because I've written, yes, there are certain situations where federal agents can make arrests without providing a warrant or lawful judicial order. They're incredibly narrow. And the very fact that they are pre-planning and premeditating these arrests means that they cannot, they do not fall within those very narrow bounds of when they can do warrantless arrests. So by virtue of that alone, these people are acting in a completely illegal rogue state. They're effectively criminals. I know that we're not going to get the police to commit to arresting criminals that have badges. That sucks. However, there needs to be continued pressure for them to do something. There needs to be continued pressure for the mayor to do something and make some substantive statement and formulate and articulate an actual substantive action and policy beyond, we're not going to cooperate with them. Clearly, non-cooperation means jack shit. Okay? Other cities.
You could just avoid.
I will tone it down.
Not to tone it down, but the swear words.
Yes, I will use cleaner language.
Kevin's going to have to.
Other cities, sorry, I don't want to make anyone's transcription job more of a pain. With similar, if not identical, non-cooperation policies have nevertheless had their law enforcement cooperate, enable, facilitate, and even completely misinform the public about what federal agents can and cannot do. We need to have our police and our executive administration here in the city actually counter this narrative and say something affirmatively to reassure us as residents that we're not going to stand for this here in Medford. I would like to see more being done. The HRC re-establishment. Tonight was a wonderful surprise to me because I had not expected that. And it's at least some, again, I mean, it's meager steps forward, but it's better than just treading water. I would like to see more communication on a more regular basis from our chief of police that is specifically about what's going on in regards to ICE and federal incursions into our local space. And frankly, I think that every step, every stage of our government should be willing, our municipal government should be willing to tiptoe into gray, legal gray areas right now because the other side is ignoring the law. The other side is literally talking about a suspending hobbyist corpus, which is crazy.
Yeah.
And literally can't be done, not that they need to anyway. So, you know, if there are certain actions that we decide to take as a community that are not illegal, but not legally, are in a legally ambiguous space, that's not the end of the world. If it is to protect our neighbors and protect our residents, and we should be willing to take that risk and do what needs to be done to keep our residents safe.
We're a little bit over. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the comment. I can just say, as one councillor, I have been communicating a similar message to the mayor and the chief of police, especially last week when we had federal masks, unidentified federal agents in the city, you know, intimidating the public. And when we have this abuse of power and intimidation and essentially a form of extortion as well to extort our compliance with illegality, I don't think our response can be, we can't do anything about it. I personally received communications from people asking me, are, are these, who are these people? Is there a criminal gang in my neighborhood? You know, and it's, people are very, people are very scared. So I think, and what we saw in Worcester last week and how Worcester police handled that abhorrently and is now pushing what I consider to be a pretty reactionary administration in the city of Worcester to consider a city policy about what the city will do in response to this. I think for folks who have said that they are on board with this, I think we need to be doing the same and have a very clear policy about this, how the city responds to federal intimidation and abuse of power, as well as informing the public about it. Because, and I know that public health and community safety brought up some of these concerns last week. I don't know if you guys want to add anything. I see councillor Lozaro.
Thank you. I appreciate this conversation and I think there is more discussion to have. There are limitations to what our public safety officers will be able to do, is my understanding. But I also know that we, as local elected officials and local leaders, have an obligation to do what we can to try to keep our residents safe. So that's been at the forefront of my mind for a long time. And that means like physical safety and psychological safety. So I continue to grapple with that, with how best to try to achieve that for our residents. And I think that there's definitely more to be done within our local government and in our communities and mutually not participate in the hierarchy of law enforcement because there are limitations to that. So we're, I am thinking about how we keep each other safe all the time and all the ways that we do that. But thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you. And, and you know, I, I'm going to watch the recording, see what was said. But what really frustrated me about what happened in Worcester, what I don't want to see happen here is local police functionally being used to facilitate and protect people executing legally dubious or illegal orders. I think that's a serious, I think that's maybe a gap in the non-cooperation agreement that we have right now. Vice President Collins.
Thank you, President Bears. And yeah, I, it's a difficult topic to bring up. I thank the president for bringing it up, continuing to bring it up. Speaking for only myself as one councillor, this is something that is, you know, obviously, I, I'm sure I'm not speaking only for myself when I say this is something that is extremely preoccupying to many of us right now. And we're in uncharted territory relating to how a local government can and should respond to this. But what I think is unacceptable would be to say, because this is uncharted, we have no agency to charter our own path here. That would at least be unacceptable to me. I think that the work ahead of us right now collaboratively throughout, you know, the, throughout the entire government of the city of Medford is to craft a policy collaboratively so that we can all be sure that we are doing what we can to make sure that public safety in Medford is in every way directed towards public safety in Medford. And some of our very most initial conversations about this, obviously, it's a fraught topic. I really think that everybody's intentions about this are good. But I think that we have to keep in mind that a response can look like a lot of things and be more helpful than what it is right now. I think that there is a very, I think that, you know, it's, it's kind of trade. But inaction is action. And I think that's what we have to be wary of when it comes to what we are declining to do, when it comes to our response to ICE and other federal agencies in Medford. We can't just do nothing. That's obviously insufficient. I think the residents said that very well. Right now, we have a lot of ordinary residents in the community that are taking on the work of figuring out what public safety looks like in this time when federal agents are coming into our community, barely letting even our chief of police know, certainly not letting other city leaders such as ourselves know, being in public property, being on residential streets, masked, unidentified. There's residents taking on the onus of saying, hey, who are you? What are you doing here? Is, is this okay? This seems suspicious. Let's make sure the people in the neighborhood are okay. Because our local government has not taken on the onus of doing that community safety work. And I think that needs to change. I think we need to share that responsibility with the community, obviously. And we share the responsibility of, if ICE has been present in the community, using our official channels and our official power to say, what comes next now? What do people need now? Are people good? What do they need? Do they know their rights? Is, is there, is there support that's needed in the wake of being visited by ICE? And it goes further than that as well. But what I think is really unacceptable is to say our responsibility is to do nothing and pretend that that's enough because it obviously isn't. So I, I thank community members for leading the way here. And I feel resolute that frankly, city leadership needs to follow in the footsteps of residents who are already doing the work of figuring out what community safety looks like in this time. So the conversation has to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we do have one item under unfinished business eligible for third reading. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Motion to take item 25-053 from the table.
And approve for third reading?
For a third reading. Thank you.
On the motion to take paper 25053 from the table and approve for third reading by councillor Lozaro, seconded by councillor Singh, the gender-affirming care and reproductive, reproductive care ordinance. Mr. Clerk, what, you ready? Please call the roll.
Take from the table and approve for the reading. Councillor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Councillor Lozaro. Councillor Lemming is absent. Councillor Scarpelli. Councillor Singh. President Bears.
Yes, 60 affirmative, what absent, the motion passes and the ordinance is ordained. Any further discussion or is there a motion? On the motion of councillor Lozaro to return, seconded by councillor Singh, although, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Callahan. Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Councillor Lozaro. Councillor Lemming is absent. Councillor Scarpelli. Councillor Singh. President Bears.
Yes, motion passes, meaning is adjourned.